This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Commissioners Meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Considerations of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on any agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the Commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, the public comment, additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the Commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS two four one oh one five three B two. I'll call this meeting to order. Bert, would you leave some place? We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from twelve P M. to one fifteen P M. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll go into Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Dee, we'll start with you.
Um, it's been pretty quiet. A lot of meetings have been canceled, so I did the um convention and tourism meeting, and then we did the chucker tournament, which had a really good turnout, and that was about it.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Uh, Mike?
Nothing to report.
Okay, we'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. Um, first, I would like to send a deep condolences out to Commissioner Kathy Anchoa's family. Um, I'd like everybody to know that her services will be at the Saint John's Basco Church at nine A M. on November thirtieth, uh, for anybody that can make it, so um, we we appreciate her service and everything she did for our county and the time she's here, so um, hopefully, everybody can send their condolences there. And then, uh, we did have an employee appreciation lunch at the Civic Center this last week. We did a survey. I brought the questions for the Commission I'd like to hand out to you guys, and so you guys can see what we asked all of our employees. And uh, when I averaged it out, we had a score on a on a scale of one to ten, um, with the employee satisfaction of eight point seven three, um, which I thought was pretty good. There uh, there's obviously always areas for improvement, and uh, and we had a couple of uh, of really good comments that, you know, we can take into consideration and try to improve on, and then bring some other items back for budget. The uh, everything else that we have currently is going to be on this agenda that'll set us for our next little track. I was out for a couple of years, and I want to thank the Commission for bringing Sean on, because it was the first time that I've ever been gone for more than one day that I came back and and actually enjoyed my job, so thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Bert. All right, we'll move into public comment for non-agendaized items only. Is there any public comment? That's fine, you can post your public comment.
Wayne Nebiker, for the record, with the Lander County Conservation District, uh, the Conservation District, we've had a very slow year this year. We we've only had one project that that worked out real well, and that was out at uh, uh, Silver Creek. And we had a spray project out there that that did a real good job, and then we've had a uh, we put off the spraying up in Ferris Creek, uh, due to we need some evaluations and and uh, see how effective our spraying has been up in Ferris Creek. There's no sense in 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 spraying a lot of properties up there on Ferris Creek if we don't get permission from all the people that own property in there, because then it's just kind of a defeating your purpose. And uh, currently, uh, we have our state convention next week, and uh, one member of the Lander County Conservation District will vote, go to that, and that will be myself, and then we will report back what's going on with the state. And also, uh, on the Conservation District, we have purchased a uh, we're in the process of purchasing a new Holland tractor that we got on a grant from the B L M, and that new Holland tractor will have a postal digger, digger with it, will have a uh, blade scraper with it, will have a baco with it, and uh, we will have a rotor teller with it. And it will be available for rent, and we're working on putting the prices up and everything, but uh, they can rent a piece of equipment, or they can rent the tractor. They cannot just rent the baco, but it's gonna, and we're gonna put it on the county website, and I think this will be a a real good deal for the community.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there any other public comment for non-agendaized items? Okay. We'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioners with one action, without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available to Lander County's Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One. Okay. Okay, uh, one, approval of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda notice. Two, approval of September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. Three, approval of September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, special meeting minutes. Four, approval of October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. Five, reapproval of January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. Nine, approval of payroll change requests. So it looks like we got them all. Um, on item five, the reapproval is because we had to make corrections on lines one, two, seven, six, and one, two, eight, four. So there's no questions. All here are motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, agenda items one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into item one point one. For discussion on possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills, we're going to pull check number two, two, five, six, seven, seven, two, two, five, eight, two, three, and two, two, five, nine, four, three, so if I can have a motion to approve the remainder.
I motion we approve the remainder of the checks.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we can't do anything with the checks we pulled, because we didn't, we won't have a quorum if I abstain, only two, so we'll have to address it, and we have another Commissioner here. Okay, so one point two, for discussion on possible action to approve, disapprove AMN Engineering's proposal for engineering design services for the Lander County Event Center in an amount of ten percent of construction fees at bid day, and if no project occurs, fees will be based on total hours accrued, based on time and material basis. Morning, guys.
Morning.
Okay, I'll open up uh, one point three as well. One point three, is that the one there? The event center, okay. For discussion on possible action to approve, disapprove, and/or modify the proposed plans for the Lander County Event Center using a phased approach in the estimated amounts of phase one, two million, one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Phase two, three million, four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, and phase three, nine million, eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, for a total estimated amount of fourteen million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. We have items one point two and one point three open.
I'm going to stand, so I'll turn it back to the audience. Um, again, the gear martini is the AMN Engineering for the record. I'm here with my lead designer, Rosanna, and um, she's giving our model brownout real quick. Um, and so there's two items in front of me. One is to approve our contract and move forward with the design of this project, and then the second item is to approve essentially um, a layout and overall budget for the event center project. Um, and so globally, the project is over on Round Mountain Drive, and um, we've been working with the livestock board. The chairman is here representing them today, so if you have any questions for him. Uh, to kind of backtrack a little bit, this Commission approved kind of an preliminary budget in order for us to start the approach of really what this event center would look like, and try to wrap our hands around it, and all encompassing events. Globally, the project is to be a multipurpose event center, um, in order to uh, be used for the entire community. So at first, it kind of started as a rodeo ground, and then it was sculpted more to an event center in order to just kind of be all encompassing. And so some of the events that we're looking at in the event center, obviously rodeos, uh, we have an extreme pool event, we're looking at monster truck and arena cross. Uh, we're focusing on, again, the entire community, so there's wrestling tournaments, youth tournaments, archery shoots, gun shows, traveling shows, car shows, graduation. We have some foundation dinners slotted in there, uh, again, youth sports practices, so in the wintertime, those kids can have a place to go play some ball, and maybe uh, start boosting some of our traveling teams and give those kids an opportunity to play year round. We have some four H and F F A events, memorials, uh, some quinceañeras, and birthdays and anniversaries is kind of the uh, off-the-cuff events that we believe this uh, center can can utilize. And so we have a few uh, concepts that we put together. Some concepts are, um, again, this is, this is all fluid, so there's nothing in it that's actually set in stone, obviously. This is preliminary, so we've gone through quite a bit of of work in order to develop those concepts. So this one that you see here was what was recommended from the livestock board, and uh, Rosanna, if you could go to your slice of view. So this uh, is about a fifteen-hundred uh, person capacity. So this design here kind of has the uh, stands and everything just on half of the arena, with the other half being with where the bucket shoots would be. Uh, we have some V I P booths, Rosanna, if you could swing around. We have uh, some V I P booths suspended up in the air, uh, based on a cantilever design that's coming off of that wall line. And so those, those V I P booths sit about twelve to fifteen people per booth, and they're kind of overlooking where the bucket shoots would be. We've heard of our announcer booth to the right there. Of course, we've got American flag dangling, and the ceiling is definitely important for sure. Um, we have our, our announcer's booth there, um, and 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 it's suspended above some pretty large uh, overhead doors. Kind of the expectation of this event center is, is the design would be that the ballast, the the floor itself would be a concrete ballast design, and it would allow the event center or eventee to remove certain material in order to bring in certain materials. So as an example, for arena cross or motocross, uh, or the monster trucks, they typically like um, a more of a compacted material, like a clay material that you could build a jump or build something off of. And so that doesn't, that's not really conducive with rodeo. And so we would remove our um, sand mallets that would be maybe utilized for the rodeo events, and we'd bring in a material that would be for the monster truck or arena cross events. And that same concept would then allow us to bring equipment in and out really easily. We have a concrete wall design that would allow the equipment to scrape that uh, material up rather efficiently and get it out. That's kind of the bee's knees when it comes to these multipurpose event centers is, is what can I do inside the event center, and how do I do that? Um, so that being said, when we're talking about terminus and youth sports, we could hog that material out and have that concrete ballast there to lay down um, astroturf. You could even build a basketball court in there, and so it kind of adds a unique perspective to being able to do a multipurpose aspect. Um, what I like about removing the material and not uh, placing like more of a ballast is that that material typically harnesses moisture, and so in in other event centers, they'll come and actually just compact that material down, and then place their false floors right on top of that. It typically seems to humidify underneath those floors, and over time, it's a, it's a water issue for, so you have these expensive, like pergola-type um, flooring systems that go down on your, on that soil. Eventually, over time, it kind of degrades that material, and so uh, some of the research that we've done, that seems to be the biggest problem, and a lot of folks are going towards this concrete ballast design, where they can remove all that material and then place those floors directly on the concrete. So that um, being said, if you could pull up your floor plan, Rosanna, we'll talk about the first floor. So maximizing space and utilizing it properly is kind of the 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 original goal, and there's quite a bit of space. If you could zoom in just a little bit. There's quite a bit of space suspended underneath the bleachers themselves, and so the idea and the concept behind that, Commissioner, if you have a a better floor plan in front of you, the idea is, is to try to utilize the space underneath the stands as much as possible. Um, it's kind of a box shape where our stands start at a six-foot head height, uh, due to where their kind of finished floor is, and then those stands, obviously, stand from there, so um, it's a little cramped at the kind of base of the wall line where the stairs are, uh, excuse me, stands. But then underneath there, there's quite a bit of void space to create, um, an opportunity to put quite a bit of of concession facilities, restroom facilities, and things like that underneath those stands. So the structural design would uh, attempt to maximize that as much as possible. It gets a little tricky when we're talking about getting utilities out from underneath there, so if we have a concession facility in there as an example, um, getting some of that ventilation out becomes challenging, but it is absolutely possible. And so the floor plan that you're seeing here, again, is preliminary, but on the bank, on the, on the base floor, we have a banquet hall, obviously restroom facilities, and we also have squeezed in a locker room set. We have some conference rooms, as well as the concession facilities itself kind of being underneath the stands itself. So with that, I believe that the locker rooms, probably in this scenario, here need to be expanded a little bit. Um, it helps with the youth teams to be able to come in, place all their bags down, and and have a place where they can lock those up, and and the same for the rodeo events, even though a lot of those folks operate out of their trailers. Um, it'd be great to have a place that a guy could go and and shower up if if uh, the event allowed him to do that. Um, so kind of switching gears a little bit, I want to show you the other design concept that we've done, which is a little bit more uh, focused on getting more seats. And so that concept has essentially three hundred and sixty degrees, if you will, of seating. So again, I think that uh, that concept is is good, and we like that. The problem is, is that the building would need to be expanded in order to achieve more seating, obviously, and still harness all of the attributes that I just discussed about banquet hall, locker rooms, and things like that. And so this concept here, um, in relation to the first concept, so again, we had like fifteen-hundred seats. This is essentially about double that seating capacity. Um, we could also look at, uh, under the first option, extending those seats, making those them higher in the air. I didn't talk about some of the vertical height issues that we have with the building. If we're trying to do arena cross and and monster trucks in the building, we need about a thirty-five-foot ceiling clearance height. Uh, so that gives us quite a bit of a tall facility, uh, so that gives us the ability to kind of keep going up in the air, if you will, with the seat seating arrangement. Uh, what you'll see here is, we have a concession facility also designed for the top floor, so it's a two-story structure, uh, because, one, it's so tall and and a lot of of space, and then, two, we wanted uh, to allow restroom facilities on both floors. So both concepts have restroom facilities on both floors, and and then again, access to the V I P booths, uh, is is the concept. So with that, um, I did provide a revenue generation, kind of give you an idea of of kind of some of those events that we talked about, and and what that revenue generation could be. Um, just so you know, the kind of some of the assumptions on that revenue generation, uh, working with the Assistant County Manager and some of the existing contracts that are out there, um, we'd be looking at a thirty percent uh, kind of um, contract price, where we would, uh, this, the county would absorb thirty percent of the commission made from the event itself. Uh, on on some of these events and others, it would be a flat rate is kind of the concept, but again, these are all very fluid. Uh, and so on, again, like on the rodeos and things like that, um, it's typically that the event takes thirty percent of the overall gate fee. Um, and so you can see some of those projections. There's also quite a bit of dry R V spaces, as well as R V spaces with wet utilities, so we've placed uh, those events that would uh, utilize such uh, s- uh, some of those items. So you can see, uh, there's quite a bit of spaces there. Um, I think we have a total of fifty-two with utilities and seventy dry. There's also livestock stalls. Um, we have two hundred and twenty-four. Uh, there's also some revenue opportunities through vendors, food vendors, and um, and then the concession facility itself. And so, again, a lot of these are are fluid. I think the county needs to realize that it, this is not only an infrastructure upgrade, but it'd be a staffing upgrade. In order to be able to house this infrastructure, maintain the infrastructure, and and if you're going to be operating concession facility, are you going to look at a subcontractor like you do with the golf course? You know, those types of things definitely need to be taken into consideration. Uh, things like the concrete ballast design that I talked about, those things are going to impact your staffing levels, and those folks are pretty busy as it is, so I think that it would be prudent to look at, you know, is our arson rec department that might be brought on to assist some of these things? In order to remove that material and bring in other material, it's not going to be a couple-hour job. It's absolutely going to be some work. Um, and with our wall design, I think it can be expedited. Uh, we were kind of looking at it as an eight-hour operation to remove and replace material in and out of the facility. To add our caveats to the facility, as it sits right now, we have full heating uh, throughout the facility. All the occupiable spaces will receive air conditioning, and the main uh, event arena itself, uh, we are still looking at the air conditioning aspect. Um, it it's, it's not as cost conducive as we'd like it to be. The main, the main kind of crutch to that is when we have exhaust being expelled into the facility, we have to have a ton of return air and replacement air into the building, so if we have air conditioning blowing in there, we're almost going to just suck it out, you know, in order to keep the exhaustions properly dispensed out of the building. And so with that, we've kind of switched gears from looking at air-conditioned event area itself and looking at large fan systems uh, in order to keep moving air constantly pushing through there, and and so that's kind of the concept on the air conditioning side. Um, again, uh, back to the first option, Rosanna, please. Yeah, thank you. So kind of looking at the, this would be the entrance of the facility, and again, we have a significant ceiling height is kind of the the issue there. And then the other issue is the building being so large, uh, we're trying to come up with a steel manufactured building design uh, to keep our costs down, by and simple. And so, uh, when you look at kind of these baseline uh, steel manufacturers in the country, uh, the more intricate we get with the design, the more cost. And so we've uh, tried to keep it, um, I'd say halfway basic, but at the same time, uh, giving it so appeal uh, that we can, we can accomplish with our budget. Uh, kind of spinning around to the backside, please. Uh, so we have kind of some covered areas um, in the back, and some other areas designed to the left of the screen here uh, for warm-up facilities and allowing them to just have a little bit of cover during the events themselves. And in your, in your packet, you were provided the overall site plan, so this is going, uh, again, here, the source complex, a very large parcel, and we're looking at recreating a majority of that parcel and under the place all of this uh, infrastructure, all the RV spaces that I talked about. And so with that, I'd kind of like to stop and see if you have any questions or comments.
Uh, Commish, you guys have any? Okay.
Um, at the next budget hearing, and then roll over the same amount, because we won't utilize the full expenditures of that fund this year. But we'd have to be aware that when we approve bids, if you guys choose to go with any of these, these are hypothetical engineered numbers, so we aren't sure where these numbers are truly going to come in at. Um, we'd have to be aware that these are potentials.
It or?
You bet, you guys have.
These things can balloon into thirty million if we're not careful, you know, and and so, okay, and so by the time, if we have all these events and this all happens, are we going to be able to make this self-sustainable? Because we're not always going to have net proceeds. And if it gets to the point where this is going to cost the county money every year to run it, it needs to be self-sustainable. It needs to make its own money and pay its own bills. It are, do you think it's going to be able to do that?
Yeah, I wish I had a crystal ball. You you know, I think that when I was looking at this and that this revenue generation, you know, this is a community uh, task at hand, most certainly. I think we have the reinvention and tourism on. Everyone's going to have to be at the forefront to make this successful. Uh, the livestock board, you know, and how they prepare their rodeos and what that looks like going forward, I think depends on who's at the helm of that, and how motivated are they to bring that revenue into the town?
Okay.
You know, I think what was kind of promising to see is how you guys did the uh, carnival, right? And surprisingly, the revenue that generated from that carnival, I was actually quite surprised how much that was. So is the opportunity there? Absolutely. Um, there isn't really a fleet in this area in terms of Lander County, Elko County, Eureka County, anyway, that has that type of aspect. Uh, one thing I will caution uh, the Commission on is, what I've seen in other areas is that they didn't plan for the big picture, and now they're adding on.
They are in famine already.
This service that I was, I'm really concerned about positioning the county in is, if we couldn't afford the locker rooms, if we couldn't afford the banquet hall, you know, then we strip it down to just kind of this rodeo center, um, without some of those amenities, and then I I I see these other communities kind of adding separate buildings in order to accomplish those needs. So that is another way to skin this cat, absolutely, is we we kind of pull some of these amenities to a phase one or phase two, if you will, um, and 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 bring those as a separate structure. I think that your ultimate infrastructure costs now, I think, will not get as cheap today as they will in the future. We continue to compound those infrastructure costs year after year. We did have a pretty good election, so I think that things are looking positive in that regard. But there's a big steel problem out there right now, and American steel versus ninety fat uh, overseas, and so those costs are fluctuating rapidly. With that being said, what we are looking at doing to save some money, and and this kind of pertains to the next uh, agenda item, is we're looking to combine these steel packages together collectively and boost our buying power. And so I've been working with the county staff, and we uh, went through state purchasing already and looked at who we can purchase the building packages from. We've obtained supplementary bids, and by combining these projects, we've saved about roughly six to eight hundred thousand by combining the two projects, assuming that this layout holds true.
Okay.
The 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 unique thing, too, is we're looking at the county purchasing those building packages outright. And so what does that do? It really saves money on the front end. Uh, if I'm a contractor and I purchase the building for you, typically, I put a five, eight, fifteen percent markup on that material cost, and it's sometimes even more.
Right.
And so that right there on a multimillion-dollar building package, there's an extra few hundred thousand. So by combining these projects and bringing them together, I think we're on on a one-point-five-million-dollar swing, uh, just by going around it in that regard. Kind of back to your original question, though, of the sustainability, absolutely is now the concern, and that's where the county as itself needs to know if that's the approach they want to go moving forward. There needs to be a significant increase in allocation of resources to staff the facility, and then, again, our other community resources of filling that facility. And I think that it's not going to be done by just your staff members here. I think it has to be done by, again, the insurance person that has to come on board as a teammate, um, and and the chamber, and everyone's got to work together to try to fill this facility. I thought what was unique is just based on three rodeos and uh, only one singular event on the ones that I had listed uh, at thirty, uh, excuse me, at forty percent uh, concession capacity, so only assuming that we're filling uh, forty percent of the seats. So only assuming that we're filling forty percent of the seats, we're able to pencil in about three-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand in revenue. So I thought that was kind of interesting. So the opportunity definitely seems viable. But again, I can't stress enough that those that are at the helm of filling that facility and how motivated they are will be able to do this.
Something else I would like to point out too is this doesn't include the grant funds that we have coming down to support some of, you know, I think we have four and a half million that we're looking at. We've got to see the fine print obviously before we sign off on the final. But that doesn't include, you know, the ten million plus support and half of it. So.
Yeah.
A couple of thoughts.
Hold on, I'm not quite done. I'm not quite done. Okay, are you're going to make the bucking shoes removable?
That is currently the approach. But from my perspective, it's not the ideal approach. Again, when we're looking at removing infrastructure and bringing it back, those are costly tasks. Someone has to physically do that.
Right, and if you have a staff, that's part of what they do.
Exactly.
Okay, and the bleachers, are you going to make those so they slide back and forth? Are they going to be fixed in place?
Right now, the current design is fixed in place. If I could, we've come up with a couple of rolling scenarios where we would, if we, if you folks wanted to do the three-hundred-and-sixty-degree arena-type approach with floor seating, we were looking at rolling those bleachers in and out over the top of the bucking shoes. So that was kind of the concept. It's never been done before, and we've been really honing in on seeing if that's actually feasible possible. And to me, it is, but it's not so.
And if we're renting out spaces, RV spaces and that, we're still liable to collect the motel tax, right? Okay, so then we have to have someone that comes in that manages that specifically. Okay. I'm done.
I was thinking maybe we might reach out to Winamaka as far as the cost analysis to see how their event center operates.
Yep, that's where a lot of these come from, most of them.
Another, my thought is that if we're going to build it, I believe we overbuild it for the simple fact because it's cheaper to do it now than to say, hey, we need this. And if we're doing it, if we build it right, I think that news travels. It's like Battle Mountain has a hell of an event center, this holder event there. But going into that on the, like the rentable RV spaces, just so we're not like in competition, I mean, we'd be in competition with the ones that are here existing, right? So I would think it'd be a good idea to set our rate higher than what the local business is so we're not per se stealing business. You know, it's like that person has an option to stay someplace cheaper. We're not necessarily the cheapest place. That's that idea. And then also, as far as our hotels in town, beds and heads, like what could we sustain as far as the seating capacity? I mean, it's, right now it's fifteen hundred. If we increase it to three thousand, are there places for those people to actually be able to stay in your town? I mean, it's a good problem because if not, I mean, it encourages growth. Maybe somebody wants to put another motel in. Because my idea with this event center is to really promote it, man. It's like to have some, I mean, if you have a facility like that, it's like when these bigger outfit states, championships, they're looking, I mean, we could be a contender for something like that, you know? Brings revenue to Lander County. It's, I think it's a great idea. I just definitely think we want to be planned and really thought out and make sure that we do it once and do it right, so.
Absolutely.
Is there any other?
From the commission, does the public have any input or questions?
One more quick thought. If we're going to put locker rooms in, shouldn't we put showers in?
Yes.
Yeah, they would be.
I didn't see any.
Preliminary floor plan did not have it because we're still trying to find room to achieve it.
Okay.
We're with you a hundred percent. We've put a lot into these floor plans, but we wanted to get some direction from the commissioners before we obviously bailed into a true design, obviously launching us into that contract. Keep in mind, everything that's been done right now is just us preparing the project for you and making sure that you're not positioned into something that you don't want to be yet. And you can get some eyes on that project and kind of truly get a feel of what it is that we're shooting for.
Okay, so I'll open it up for public questions or comments. Yes, sir. Mike, if you wouldn't mind just come to the front here so we get everything on the record. Thank you.
Hi, Greg, Chairman, Lander County Livestock Board. I'm Aaron. Thank you. You did an awesome presentation. One thing I just want to add to what he's talking about. I've already had somebody from Winamaka reaching out to me about the, they've heard about the facility, about the monster truck deal. They got a guy that's building monster trucks in Winamaka right now. I was explaining to them kind of what we're trying to do and kind of where Aaron's designing, what the board's talked about, the county and stuff. And they're actually, folks in Winamaka are already feeling excited about it, thinking we can work together with Winamaka because their facility ultimately does not hold the monster trucks. They bounce from inside to outside. And with this being higher and stuff, there's quite a bit of interest coming from Winamaka to start hosting if we can get this approved, this type of situation here. So I just kind of want to throw that out there that we've already had some interest in.
Nice.
Even though it's not approved and all that, it's just there is interest out there. Kind of where I want to go with it.
All right. Well, thank you, Mike. Any other public comment or questions?
My name is Tony Shepherd. I just wanted to know how big the arena is going to be, wide and how long?
Right now, it's three-hundred feet long and a hundred-and-fifty feet wide.
Only a hundred-and-fifty feet wide?
That's, and that was really based on our budget.
Right.
So how much building we can?
But the people are going to see what's in the arena. So my opinion, you can't build the arena big enough. You have a little narrow arena there and it's not, it's good for wrestling or whatever. But the longer you have it and the wider, the better it is on horses for roping and everything else. I'm just saying, if you're going to, I've built two or three in Eureka. I never did build one wide enough or long enough.
Thanks, Lenny.
Absolutely, and that's kind of where that budget constraint.
That was my budget too. But I'm just telling you, it's easier to, like Brian said, build it right the first time. And like Winamaka has like probably three arenas. Why they have the outdoor ones is, you know, in the summertime they use it. But a lot of times at one of those big ropings where you have twelve-hundred teams or something, they'll run the first hundred teams in the first arena. And if they catch, they take it into the second one. And the third, you just keep roping until that does. And that's why you have to have enough room to have probably another arena there somewhere set up the same way. If it starts getting big, and they can run them through their twelve-hundred teams, deem ropers pretty fast.
For comparison, does anybody know like a, like a large event at the Winamaka Event Center, what's it bring in people? I mean, how many people do they actually come to these events? And then what is the actual footprint of that main event center in Winamaka?
I think theirs is two-fifty by four-hundred.
Two-fifty by four-hundred? And you're saying, Lenny, at that size, it's still somewhat limited in what they can do. They do a lot of it outside still, correct?
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I know it costs, then you've got to build a roof on it, but you can, you can make your arena wide and long. And if the narrower, the worse it is for roping. And bucking horses too. They buck and hit the fence. You know, if it's too narrow, and I don't know where the bucking shoes are, if they're on one end or the other, it is. Like when a bucking horse comes to the fence and they got to turn back, you know, that's part of rodeo. But I'm just saying, they'll, they'll build it right.
And you bring up some really good points, and that's kind of, I think the crutch to where we're at is, is one, how many seats do we really want to shoot for? And then, you know, giving the project the budgetary flexibility to achieve that. Mr. Shepherd brings us some really good points, and that's kind of where I was talking back to my earlier point of positioning this project into a smaller skeleton than maybe what it should be. And that's kind of the concern that we have. Mr. Ramos brought up the grant funding that the county has sought after, worked really hard to achieve. I think that funding is going to be at point twenty-five, twenty-six available. And so that definitely adds to that opportunity. I think this year, looking at your budgetary outlay, you know, we're looking to get the building packages and get the mass grading solidified. And then if you could then roll that budget over for the next fiscal year, you know, I think then we're really starting, and then with the grant funding, I think that we could expand to more of what Mr. Shepherd's talking about and then maybe squeeze some more seats in for some more revenue generation.
Rafter Three C has seven-five-hundred square feet, one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-two seats, and thirty seats for wheelchair, and a twenty-five-thousand-foot concourse for event use.
Say that again, that was who?
Rafter Three C in Fallon, they're booked solid for three years. And they have a seven-five-hundred-square-feet building, one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-two seats, and thirty seats for wheelchair, twenty-five-thousand-foot concourse area for event use, and seven-hundred parking spaces.
Seventy-five-hundred or seventy-five, seven-hundred?
Seventy-five thousand. I'm sorry.
And I was going to say, and that's even small, seventy-five thousand square foot.
And I know that people park out in the street. Because there's not enough room. And they are booked solid for the next three years. And they have all kinds of events. It's amazing the stuff they have there.
Is there any other public comment or questions?
I think Aaron might be a little off because I know the original sign, probably in there, it was wider than a hundred-and-fifty, the original width of the arena. So we went off of Winamaka and Milton.
Yeah.
And it might be just a typo or something. But I think the original one was like one-eighty, two-twenty or something. Because the original width, it could be just a typo and maybe just moving stuff around.
Yeah, we absolutely can, but no, it's a three-hundred by a hundred-and-fifty feet grand house. It sits, and that's always been the original kind of what we could squeeze into that building cost. So that was all that, that is how it is. But in terms of going forward, you know, it sounds like we need to consider it a little bit larger for sure. And again, that's where we have to be able to house that infrastructure. And again, I'm very optimistic with our building packages being combined that we can save some significant.
That's important.
Okay, any other public comment or questions? Okay, so. Yes.
Lamont Edgar for the record. Aaron, I got a couple of questions. I looked through the paperwork there, and one thing I think we need to consider, if it's not on the budget already for this project, is what equipment are we going to need to run this business? Are we looking at loaders, skid loaders, forklifts? I wonder if that's included in our, in our building budget or if that's just strictly the structure itself?
Strictly the structure itself and kind of those types of assets, either the county's going to pull from their existing resources or we're having to purchase new, so that is not.
Oh, okay. One thing I wanted to, I was looking at the, are those the roll-up doors on the side for monster trucks, Aaron? Those ones on the side?
That is, it looks a little odd there. It's a twenty-foot ceiling clearance, a twenty-foot head height on that door.
Okay, so we should have enough height and width to get the biggest trucks through, so.
Yeah, we look at monster trucks and even, or we look at dump trucks and blades.
Okay.
So that's kind of how we design those doors.
Yeah, and a few people brought up the question that you've already addressed about the height of being able to do certain events, especially that, you know, when those bikes get up really high in the air, so. One of them is for this, for this event center, is it, are we strictly bringing in outside vendors for food, drinks, stuff like that? Is that going to be in-house? I mean, because if we have local vendors, people that bring food trucks, and I know this is jumping the gun a little bit, but if we're going to put them inside the building, where would we put them? Because I didn't see somewhere on there, or maybe I just overlooked it.
Yeah, so underneath the bleachers themselves, we have basically an entire concession center underneath the bleachers themselves. And kind of the original intention was is to maybe allow multiple concessions that maybe offer different type of food tags. I was kind of originally like pizza here, whatever, the next one. And so that is the idea. And in terms of how you house that, that is absolutely critical question the county has.
I think Lamont was saying, or at least my track of thought, was that we have current vendors that operate out of trailers. Like Winamaka, you go in there, they can pull in a, you have a coffee trailer. It says right up there, another mobile vendor. Would we have that option with this facility?
And you can see in this, but this outlay, you know, we looked at basically five food vendors and three non-food vendors to be placed on the site itself, not inside the facility. Inside the facility would have its own commercial kitchen facility.
Okay.
And then they, you know, that's where I think the county has a revenue opportunity there. And so to me, you would either want to allow someone like you do at the golf course and maybe look at a percentage of that commission would probably be the right approach.
Yeah, because for food and drink, especially if we're allowing vendors to come in, the last thing we want them to do is to head outside the arena and then have to come back in. So I was just making sure that we have, you know, somewhere for those people to set up and.
Sure. Yeah, so I get where you're saying. There's a flat rate for those outside vendors. We did look at, again, outside in the building, these food trucks that come around, you know, that type of opportunity. So we looked at that, and again, the county can look at X amount of percentage of commission of their fees, of their revenue, if you will, or a flat rate. We kind of went both ways on it. One of the staff members brought up a good point of it's kind of the honor system when it comes to cash. And so a flat rate for some of those vendors to just be onsite might be the right approach. But you're right, I mean, going in and out of the facility might take away from the concession facility inside with those food trucks. But, you know, but it's completely up to you how you'd like that to go. You can allow food trucks.
One of the questions I got is, so you say that it'll have full kitchen in there built? What about other, other kind of spaces? Because one thing I started thinking about revenue is not only can you make money off ticket sales and stuff, but merchandise. So is there going to be somewhere where people can pick up maybe Lander County merchandise? Maybe that's, you know, people buy a ticket, they come up, they get a shirt, they get something else, you know? Start thinking about that. If we could have a designated areas, just, just think about it. Where, if we could put somewhere to sell merchandise or promote local things or?
You could convert one of the offices into a retail space.
Because you want, if you're going to sell merchandise, you want that right where people are coming in and accessible and people can get, you know? A lot of venues, what they do is they'll take a percentage of, like if a Monster Jam comes in or whatever, and you allow them to sell merchandise, the county will get a percentage. You know, that's the way it's going to be set up. And on the bottom here, those, those doors on, are those loading docks? Or somewhere where semis could back down and things could get?
No, a lot of those are for the individual. And those are all preliminary. What we're looking at is, is, there's a lot of different design approaches to, if I have my bull and you have your bulls, we don't want to mix them. And so there's a lot of different approaches of how we bring that different stock into the facility and out of the facility. And then, so a lot of those doors are just kind of preliminary thrown in there. But in reality, they're all going to be geared towards getting stock into that facility as well as people. So in terms of the main equipment access and things like that, it'd be on the sides. And then the front, it would probably be the main offload for things like food and beverage.
Yeah, so what I was talking, are we going to have anywhere for, for larger, we'll say, semi-trucks to back down and unload via forklift? Or, because a lot of these big shows that come in, they just want somewhere to offload. They probably won't be able to pull just, I mean, they might be able to just pull in the side, but they'll, you know, somewhere where the semis can back down into an unloading kind of areas.
Okay, no, that's a good point. Hadn't really considered an actual loading dock.
Yeah, things to get unloaded in, because some of these bigger shows, they bring stages and they need, you know, they need ways to get them in and out. That's all I have.
I have a public comment.
Okay.
Online, I agree, please make the arena wider and longer for rodeo competitors so the arena size is safe. Also, please consider waiving the facility fees for youth groups as they are the future and many youth organizations can't afford the fees that will be enacted for the facility usage. This fact has been what has caused events in Reno to move to Fallon. It's not worth building something like this when your local high school rodeo club can't afford to put on a rodeo because of fees are so high.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Yes, sir.
Is there any estimated maintenance and costs that we've got going forward? I mean, because, you know, you're going to, like Lamont said, you're going to have to have trucks, dump trucks, you're going to have to have loaders and everything, all that. And all that has an unforeseen cost and an unforeseen maintenance cost. I mean, I think this is something, before we go a lot further forward, we need to have all this estimated out where we can kind of get an idea of how much it's going to cost the taxpayer.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment or questions?
Okay, so a couple of things that I think that Aaron did mention is the.
So a couple of things that, um, I think that Aaron did mention is the retractable bleachers. One of the reasons that we discussed that and didn't go with it is because we wanted to a hundred percent utilize space. And so putting the concessions underneath of them, you know, it doesn't, you, you aren't losing that space when you push them in and out. And, uh, and the other thing is, we only considered the building. So the remainder of that site still has plenty of room if we want to put additional loading docks, uh, outdoor arenas for, for bigger events. Um, so there's a whole bunch more ground there that we can add additional things that will supplement this too and hopefully a few more phases, like a warm-up arena that may be covered that's connected to this. There's been some other considerations that, that aren't really tied to what he's presenting, um, for some, some future plans, so it's not blindly just throwing a building up and then praying that it works. You know, have three and four phases kind of set out where, you know, it might be ten or fifteen years down the road when they're looking at maybe utilizing some of these phases or even, even adjusting them a little bit. Uh, but I, I would have to agree with, with Lenny's comment that the bigger, the better. It's just, we're kind of, Aaron stuck to the budget restraints and that's a lot due to, to myself and Sean saying, hey, you know, we, we went and asked our commission for this much money, we have this much grant money coming, we need to fall within this, uh, so we don't get kicked around, and he did a great job doing that, so thank you, Aaron. But, you know, this is also up to the consideration of the commission.
Didn't we talk about putting, we're moving the rodeo grounds over in that area anyway? So we should be able to utilize the arena from the rodeo grounds? If it's all, it's all supposed to be right in that same area, right? Because we're moving the rodeo grounds from over here in the flood zone over into that same area is what I had understood when we were at the budget meetings, right?
No, I don't think so. I think that we were, you're going to utilize it for rodeos, but I thought that we were going to build new.
That's, yeah, but it should be right in that same area, right?
You're talking on this side here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can see, and I apologize, I didn't kind of give you that three thousand foot level perspective. So again, this is Round Mountain Drive off to your left here. And then you can see the parking lot and the building directly adjoining that. And then behind that, to its right, is the outdoor arena that would, that you're talking about.
Right, yeah.
Where we're going to move the old rodeo grounds to the outdoor arena component, absolutely.
So we can utilize that facility also.
Yeah, but I don't want this to be confused with us demoing the, the existing one. I think it's, it's remaining for, say, there's, you know, a Buster Miller or Junior Rodeo and there's a big event going on over here, that one would still be utilized. So we're, this will be the main rodeo grounds now for Lander County, but that existing infrastructure will remain.
Okay, so we're still going to pump water and maintain it?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, hopefully we don't have to pump water because they have another, uh, you know, facility they can use. But during the, you know, the eight months of the year, they don't have water in the arena, it can be utilized for other things, you know, people go and warm up their horses, whatever they want.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
What's up, Pam?
Oh, sorry, yes, Pam.
Hi, Pam Harrington for the record. Um, I just wanted to say, that kind of segues into, um, something we're going to be talking about in a little bit. I see a lot of, uh, roof space for solar panels. And would that be something to supplement our electricity with solar panel use at all?
There's some really good grants out for that.
Thank you, Pam.
Yeah.
Okay, any more public comment or questions? Okay, so, uh, first thing we're going to be looking at is for the, uh, engineer's proposal to approve, disapprove, so, uh, there's no questions on that. I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve A and M's engineering's proposal for engineering design services for Lander County Event Center. The amount of ten percent of construction fees a bid day, if no project occurs, fees will be based on total hours accrued, based on time and material basis.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now one point three. So, does somebody have a motion on that one?
And before you make your motion on one three, if I could just get some direction, a couple of things that I'm looking for is, would you like us to expand the arena? It kind of seems like that might be the consensus. The other aspect is, how many seats do you want as the target?
Yeah, so definitely, I think, like we say, building it, uh, overbuilding it is going to be the best approach. Um, your original design was fifteen hundred seats?
About, yes.
Okay, and do we know the capacity of the Winnebago Event Center?
I think there's like twelve, thirteen hundred, so we're right in line with them.
What do you guys think about if we double that to a capacity of three thousand seats?
I'm fine with the three thousand. I mean, the big events, is that you go, you go to, uh, high school sports, if, if you bring in high school sports, how the NIA has worked in the past is they do get all gate money. Uh, where you make your money for holding a state event is through concessions, uh, whether you rent it out, take percentages or anything else. But, uh, like I said, they don't, from, from what was talked about at one of the meetings was that they won't use. They have too many complaints on Winnebago, uh, because of the pillars and the seating capacity. I mean, if we widen it out, you're talking more mats, bigger capacity. The plan is to bring all, all classes together, basketball, turtle, it's the same thing. You can rent three or four floors, you're going to get multiple groups. I mean, that's, that's the piece that, that I do know. Um, youth sports is huge. I mean, you go to Reno and look at, uh, youth basketball and youth volleyball and stuff like that. I mean, the seating can be filled. Um, it makes it off concessions more than ticket money. A lot of them are free.
So you think three thousand?
I, I don't.
Capacity of three thousand?
Permanent seating and that, I mean, you also, in here ain't, I mean, there's opportunity for concerts and everything else. Dudes might be, you know, I mean, there's, there's stuff that's missed in here too.
Yeah.
Especially if you, you know, you do waive the, the youth sports fees and stuff. I mean, that's revenue, you can bring anything if it's twice once or twice a year. I like the three thousand.
So that'll increase our cost, so does that mean we have to put this back on again? Or can we make the motion off of this item?
Oh, you can make the motion. So there's, uh, and, and like I said, these are engineer estimated numbers. When, when it comes to bid time and we, and you guys are approving these bids, that's, that's when we have to figure out how we want to work this throughout the budget. And if we want to, you know, roll some over, because it's going to take multiple budgets to do this. So if you guys want to roll the full amount over again, you know, we, we can work our way through that, but it's the desire of this commission.
And Aaron's always been great about giving us like cost estimates based on this, if we do this. So I would think for the same, you know, if we build it this size with this seating capacity, this is what we're looking at. So it's just, but I think the idea, Aaron, is it is to build it larger.
We'll take that direction and then we'll come back to you. This won't be the last time you're going to hear about it.
Right.
Um, just like the other project that we're about to talk about. There's quite a bit of staff involvement, monthly meetings. So we'll continue to sculpt that and, and go back to you with some, uh, updated design models.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. So I'll hear a motion on one point three.
A motion to approve um, the proposed plans for Lander County Event Center using the phased approach in the estimated amounts of phase one, two million one hundred fifty thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars. Phase two, three million four hundred forty thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars. And phase three, nine million eighty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars for total estimated amount of fourteen million six hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, and would, and just note the, the numbers as well, the three thousand seating and.
Oh.
And expanding.
With the, with the change of adding, changing from fif- fifteen hundred seats to three thousand and widening and lengthening the arena floor.
Okay, so.
A second.
Second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great, so now we're moving to one point four, uh, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove and/or modify the proposed plans for Battle Mountain Fire Hall in the invested, in the estimated amounts of phase one improvements for entrance on State Route three oh five at one million three hundred seventy-two thousand, fifty-six dollars. Phase two, site utilities at two million five hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars. And phase three, building at seventeen million, six hundred thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars for an estimated total amount of twenty-one million, five hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Okay, so. All your agenda.
Again, Aaron Martina, the same engineer for the record. Um, so kind of the, little bit of recap. The original expectation was this project, we were going to fill on this existing Lander County parcel. Original contract and direction was given. That parcel, very constrained, really not able to house the infrastructure needed. Lander County then took that and sought after, um, land purchase and ultimately obtained the parcel across the street. Okay? And so with that, there's been a little bit of change, obviously, from here to there. And, and the biggest change is one, access, the utilities. But this here shows we're accessing off of three oh five. What that requires is an end-on occupancy permit that we're seeking currently based on this final direction. And that occupancy permit, we're going a little above and beyond, uh, a normal, typically our occupancy of the facility and our traffic that we're creating from the project doesn't necessarily require this large frontage improvement here. But because we're going to be having emergency vehicles in and out of here, um, and then those vehicles having to get up to speed if they're heading south on three oh five, we wanted to give them the ability and the, the room, uh, to, to either get up to speed or, or frankly, pull into the facility without the concerns of being. So, uh, this concept here is more of an acceleration, deceleration lane. Um, but again, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that, so we can trim that back and reduce those costs. Uh, we can do that by creating a type four, uh, uh, entrance into the facility, which is kind of more looking like the main, um, entrances that you see there where it's kind of like this flared end section and, and none of the acceleration, deceleration lanes that you see, um, with the turnouts. So, so there is some cost reduction there if we wanted to, but it's not really recommended just based on what we're doing in the, in the facility. Uh, we've already spoken to Endon about that. And they're more in line with what we're proposing here versus trying to reduce that down to the type four intersection. So that's kind of one caveat. The other caveat is, is that we got to connect this building and its infrastructure to this facility. And so what I mean by that is security, data and those types of things, we'd like it to talk, right? We, we have our, we all badge in and out of these doors. And so, um, you know, if, if you get a new employee and you, and you want them to have access to that facility, it'd be great to be able to just utilize your same system, add that facility with their badging abilities and then they can go and directly within minutes be able to access whatever facility you'd like. And so with that comes a jack and bore operation that will extend a utility from one side of three oh five to the other in order to get us the ability to cross under the highway with any type of infrastructure that we want. Uh, we're planning that jack and door operations or directional bore drilling are not cheap. It's absolutely costly. Um, and, and just the permitting process and not alone is, is, uh, challenging. With that though, we're planning for the future as well to not only allow the county to be able to go over to that facility, but we're going to have several sleeves in that pipe to allow multiple utility services to enter underneath that highway, uh, with the shared line agreement with Lander County. Charge them or not, it's up to you, uh, to basically allow multiple utilities to extend to and fro under three oh five, uh, for that facility. So that's kind of one of the connection aspects. And then the other aspect is, is we're always trying to target the architectural value of this building and making it a complex type of feel so that it looks like this was planned and designed appropriately. Um, I'm not a, I'm not extremely a big fan of this building's architectural layout, but it is drawing on me. So with that, so with that, uh, we've tried to mimic some of those attributes to try to highlight that same feel. Uh, so one of those, uh, aspects is you can see the large three column sets that we have. So those are to mimic the existing column sets that you have out here. Uh, we have this glass, uh, Fourier approach with an overhang glass, just like you have here. One that's a little more maintenance friendly though, you don't have anyone up there trying to get to that. We had to do a tie-off system on this one and some of those attributes. So we tried to make it a little more access friendly and maintenance friendly. Um, and so that's, uh, that aspect there, um. One, one issue that will change is this facility doesn't appear to be designed as a type one infrastructure. And that is a problem. Uh, for us on our facility here, this occupancy launches us into a different building code. And what I mean by that is a type one facility is designed to be the safest when it comes to wind load, uh, seismic loading and, and those types of codes launch us into, again, a different category and a different set of criteria for the structural design itself. That being said, and the reason I bring that up, is one, it'll be the safest building or should be the safest building in town. Um, but the other aspect is, is that this freestanding co- uh, concrete masonry unit wall, CMU wall, what this is, 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 it's not conducive with a type four, type one facility. Um, we're going to be having a metal structure kind of similar to, uh, the event center where we're looking at a steel building design. And that steel building under a seismic event will sway. There's no question about it. And so that sway, it has to be able to use work as a, as a one diaphragm, if you will, as that seismic event is, is in, is in acting on that structure. If we have a concrete masonry unit kind of curtain wall and making up the void between the steel columns, if you will, uh, that wall will be acting independently. And under a type one design becomes actually too much dead load in this area. And it becomes, it's actually kind of dangerous where that, that wall would have to be a significant wall designed in order to meet the type one design. So my point being is that we're trying to match the architectural value of this facility, but the CMU infrastructure that you're seeing here is, we're going to have to make some trade-offs. Um, because this type one building needs to be able to sway independently in the, in a seismic event. And we don't need the increased dead load on, on, on that wall, one. And if we wanted to make that CMU wall fit those needs, it would have to be strictly beefed up. And then at that point, we might as well just stand the whole building up with the CMU wall and not do our steel building design. I don't recommend that approach because the build, this building is so large. We're looking at saving as many costs as we can, so the steel infrastructure design is absolutely the way to go. And so I know I may be losing some of you. So again, what I'm saying is, we have a steel building, say there's columns here. How do we fill that void between those columns? What does that look like? And so again, do we use the concrete masonry units like this building has? Or do we do like a curtain wall with a steel studded frame and we frame those walls up? Um, and that is the approach that we're looking at, is a steel studded framed infrastructure that fills the voids in between the, the steel building columns and beams themselves. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so that really helps our structural design in order to make it where we're meeting those type one facility requirements and it's not increasing our costs. Uh, and so it's actually reducing our costs because, uh, those, um, steel studded framing is kind of like wood framing, it just goes up rather quick. And, uh, it'll be a non-low bearing infrastructure technically. The only load that will be on it will be the facade that we place on that curtain wall. Uh, so that facade will look similar to this building, but it won't be exact. And so we're going to try to mimic, uh, build that brick and CMU, um, approach. Uh, but it, it, there'll be some trade-offs as we hunt that down and try to find, uh, the proper textures to make the, that building look similar to this. All right, so there's been quite a bit that's gone into this design. Um, again, working with staff on a monthly basis, Robert and his team, uh, have been instrumental. Mike and, and his team as well. Um, again, this is a multi-purpose facility because of, we have volunteer fire department, right? Um, how do we make this project conducive to where it's worth the investment and help harnesses and helps all the departments? So that's kind of the approach here, uh, to make it worth the investment of the infrastructure. So this, uh, building is to house not only the VFD and their fire trucks and their infrastructure, but also the EMS as well as the sheriff's office at the training facility inside the building. Uh, so with that, let's go to that first floor, thank you very much. Um, and so, uh, we'll start with the occupiable spaces here on the left. We have, uh, conference room facilities, um, on the far left there. Uh, when you come into the main entrance of the building, you have kind of this secured area that has office space to the right. Obviously some restroom facilities down there. And, and again, all of this would be secured. Kind of the idea is, is you can have that front door a- access to allow, uh, the public, uh, to that point and then to other areas. So those are all kind of things that need to still be worked out. Uh, but the idea is, for the most part, that this is a hundred percent secure facility and, and those that are being there would have to have badge access to get in. Kind of going towards the back of the facility, we have storage on the right. Can't stress enough, buildings like this not having enough storage. The room on the left is the simulation room. So Robert's going to be in there taking down criminals in a virtual reality standpoint. So that ought to be pretty neat. I hope I get to try it out. We've got quite a bit of storage in there as well. There's some door access that you can't really see into that backside of the facility. And so that's kind of that bottom floor. And going over to the storage bays, ultimately, they're designed to house two ladder trucks. That's really what the bays were designed to do. So those bays give us a little bit of breathing room outside of those ladder trucks. So separating what I'm calling bay one from bay two in the middle there is a occupiable space with a mezzanine on top. And so that occupiable space underneath has these turnout gear locations so that the guys can take their gear off and keep it in a place that's safe. Some of that gear has, you know, these guys are getting into all sorts of chemical driven situations, right? And not only just like lead and things like that, but when they're at near a car fire, things like that, they're getting some of those battery acid type stuff on them. They need to be able to take their turnout gear off in a proper location. We have commercial wash facilities down there so they can take their gear off, wash it properly, and not have to really walk around the entire building to do that. Again, on the top of the screen there, where the center door is, we have some additional storage, again, kind of drive up storage for that area. Then again, above that, I don't know if you can change your slices out. So above that, we have a mezzanine for, it'll be designed for about 3,000 pounds per square foot port load to be placed up there. And the point being is that a mezzanine that's for storage, these guys will have a forklift access to get storage hoses and all the equipment needs that you'd have. They'll be able to store it in this mezzanine. It's a little bit overdesigned because I know that when we give people the opportunity to store things with a forklift, they tend to store quite a bit up there. So it'll be designed to house a significant weight load and just give us the ability to store all the hoses and all the things that we currently kind of have stuffed in the other facilities. Going into bay three, which is the far right bay, that is designed to be a maintenance bay. So globally, these first bay one and two, they are not going to have exhaust expelling systems. But bay three will. And so there would be a hundred percent maintenance bay that'll allow you to fire up, work on that truck and get that exhaust out. To do that same concept in the other two bays is extremely costly. So we're looking to reduce those costs and make bay three the only maintenance bay that'll have that type of aspect. Kind of going deeper into the bays, each truck location will have the ability to fill water, air for its brakes and things like that. And then maintenance bay three will have a few more attributes. Again, the exhaust aspect as well as a few others to make it unique and allow you to do typical maintenance in that. There'll be a small shelf underneath the floor to allow a mechanic to get underneath there, change oil, things like that. So I see that bay being utilized for not only the fire and EMS folks, but obviously other county equipment and construction. Going to the second floor. Just yeah, the second floor now. Okay, so this second floor has been designed to be residential occupancy. And that's really important when we're talking about building code compliance. What we were trying to get away from, or limit our costs, I should say, is not having to do a elevator. They become extremely expensive and the maintenance cost of those. So we have a residential occupancy upstairs that'll be utilized for housing. And again, these needs are coming from the sheriff's office and the EMS folks in terms of those housing needs. And so on the far left here, we have a day room and a commercial kitchen facility to allow them to cook and those types of things. We have some IT room and computer lab, obviously restroom and shower facilities. And then I believe we have six bunk rooms for overnight stay. And so I believe that we have a 24 hour EMS staff. So they'll be staying in those facilities as well as, and Robert can speak to this. They're looking at doing some training and bringing in some potential revenue for the county and doing some, Robert, do you mind speaking to that a little bit on what that training included?
Robert, quick from sheriff's office. So the intent for this facility is kind of a little backdate on it. We've previously budgeted to upgrade another building in the county to do our police academies. That fell through because of the cost. It wasn't cost effective for that building. So our alternative was to build off another building from the side of the sheriff's office. And then this project came up. So now we've been incorporating into this because we believe it to be a much cheaper aspect. So when we were doing our police academies, currently, we have a category three academy certified in the state of Nevada, which is a jail or detentions level academy. We do draw in agencies from other jurisdictions into that. And their staff realistically need someplace to stay if we're going to draw more in. And so that's where this comes from, is to have a space for them to stay and be able to potentially draw in other agencies from northern Nevada into the police academies that we hold. We're on track for our category one police academy to be certified by the end of the year. And then the hopes after that will be what's called a category two or reserve academy that we could then offer to the community as a whole. Additionally, our Austin deputies, when we have remote deputies in Austin, we bring them up for training courses and classes. Instead of putting them in a hotel, we could house them in this facility as well.
So again, this is a residential occupancy upstairs. We have a small deck catalytering off the backside of the building. And so there'll be a little picnic area on the bottom floor, but no access to the upstairs from down there. We'll have a little barbecue area as well. So it'll be a pretty nice facility. So with that, that is kind of the occupiable space of the facility. If we could go back to the 3D model as well. So we have a five deck roof design with a membrane roof on the left side of the screen with a pitched roof on the right side. Again, this is a steel infrastructure building design. And so I think that'll help us keep our costs down. The second, well, really, both floors will be a concrete floor. So I know that this building here has the same concept. Concrete floor on the bottom, concrete suspended composite deck, as we call it, on the second floor. We'd be looking to target that same aspect for a couple of reasons. One, we could polish that concrete and not have to do a bunch of tile work. Seems like that finish work, tile and things like that, very costly. So that kind of helps us leverage baseline infrastructure costs to get us to the end goal, which is finished property. So we're looking at a concrete floor polished and sanded like you have here. We've increased the dead load requirements of that second floor to try to alleviate some of this cracking that you have in this building. And so we're looking at not repeating some of those issues that are in this facility. We're looking at basically increasing our structural section to make sure that we are planning it properly for the loading requirements and try to alleviate any of that stress cracks. And so with that, this phase one infrastructure cost is looking at the parking lot, the building, and also the Endo improvements. One thing I didn't talk about is if you could swing around to the far right side, Rosetta. My poor computer. So on the far right side of bay three, there is an outdoor wash bay that's been requested. It's nothing too crazy. Basically, you'll go by, open a valve up, drive through a U shape design and to allow you to wash any vehicle off that you'd like. And so that's been requested. I think I understand that Endo would like to utilize that. I'm not going to use it, but that's kind of the other key piece to the site is that wash bay. So that's what that lane is for. And then in our overall design, we kind of had a few buildings slotted to the backside of the property. Those are not part of this project, but we're just trying to kind of master plan the overall facility to see where we could squeeze additional buildings if needed in the future. So there is a little bit of room to expand those in the future. Some other aspects is, you know, this building in this project want to be good neighbors with the surrounding folks. So we have a screen wall being placed on the three perimeter side of the facility adjoining those residential and one commercial adjoining. So with that being said, I'd be happy to take any questions and comments.
Yeah, I have a few questions. But first, I want, this is a really large number and I'm very interested in hearing from the public on it. So be getting your thoughts together on questions and comments on it. So a couple of things here. So number one, the maintenance, based on your picture, the maintenance bay is too big. You don't need six slots to service our county equipment. You can go to any retail shop where the volume is in and out every single day. I don't have six bays. It's overbuilt. And then the thing, when you start looking at something with maintenance size, I mean, if you're going to start doing Lander County road and bridge stuff over there, then that would make sense. But they're over there, and then what does that look like, bringing equipment in and out? So that's my first thought. Number two is, as far as this, these bedrooms and stuff, overnights, I can understand why we need them for our EMS, but are we putting more in to facilitate these category three trainers? So my question there would be, why can't they stay in motels? I mean, why would that limit them? If we have that service that we're giving to people, why do we have to have a bunk in that facility? Why couldn't they just stay in a motel? So I'd like an answer to that question. And then the local wash bay, that's, or the outside wash bay, that'd be another thing. Because everything that we're doing in this, there's going to be a cost associated with it. And again, it's a large number. And I believe in building it right, but there's a point of being sensible about it. I mean, the event center, we have a large room to play with bringing revenue in to justify the cost of that. This is a public safety facility, which yes, it's important, but I think we have to be very sensible about it. So those would be some of my comments.
Awesome.
Yes. If I could address it really quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
So on the maintenance bay itself, again, these are slotted by staff. And so by all means, if you think that they're too large, this is, again, these aspects are outlined by the staff members, and that's what they're requesting. So we can absolutely trim that back if the condition desired, for sure.
I mean, I'm coming just from, that's my background. That's what I did for thirty some years. And it's like, what, they have vehicles there now. Why weren't they being maintained if they had somebody to maintain them? So are we looking at bringing on, what, one, two, three full-time mechanics? What's that cost look like? You know? So it's just, I don't know. I just think there's, we have to be sensible about it, so.
Who normally performs maintenance on the ambulances and the fire trucks? Do we, I mean.
I think it's our local shops that we have.
We use our local shops and I mean.
Yeah, I don't, so Aaron, if you could show them exactly what the maintenance, there aren't six maintenance bays.
No, no.
I think there's some confusion on how many maintenance bays there are here.
There's one maintenance bay on the right hand.
It's that one bay right there, I think is the maintenance bay. And then the washer rack, to address that, we have nowhere that we wash county equipment right now, nor does Endo. So like our sand trucks and plows and all that, we don't have anywhere that we could take and wash it. And I know that the local car washers don't think it's the neatest when you pull, you know, a sander in there and wash it out. So that was kind of the thought process behind that, but there are not six maintenance bays.
Okay, so that makes more sense.
Where are the ambulances?
That was my question.
I thought that was the ambulances.
Yeah, we got, we just have them in our funny little model here, just placed. But right now, the bays one and two, which are the two larger bays, those are all strictly storage for your current fire trucks that you have.
And ambulances?
Yes.
And ambulances.
Yes, and we still don't have enough. You guys have a ton of trucks at the airport. You have this facility.
Well, that's up for debate as well, because I think we're holding on to a lot of stuff. I don't necessarily think we need it. These did yard it out of the county. If we need a specific tool to address a certain need, we buy it. And then we get rid of three units that we're hanging on to basically do what one unit can do.
So your primary trucks that I believe, you know, in all reality, those two ambulances would not be in that far maintenance bay. They would be in bays one or two.
Okay, that makes more sense.
And then you have one very, very large ladder truck that was brought onboard just recently, donated to the county. And so, and then the remaining bays are all being filled up as it currently sits for your current trucks, so.
Yeah, just so you guys know, the bays there, it doesn't show in this picture, but that, that would only house what we currently have. So we didn't, we didn't add additional bays that are empty for the need of something that may be there.
Well, these are actually in service.
In service. I don't disagree with your statement that there are probably some that are being, you know, multitasked that you could trim back, but that's to fit what we currently have.
My questions more will be for Robert and. So with this, we get the livestock presentation. We get the estimated budget income, you know, revenue generation. So with this training academy deal, what's, what's our financial impact? What's the relief on the taxpayers? What's the revenue coming in? Whose budget? I mean, I got several questions instead of combining them. I mean, what's the estimated revenue coming in from offering outside services? What's it cost us to do a cadet at the academy? To send them to wherever they go versus doing it in-house?
So there's, Robert, quick for the sheriff's office. So there's a few aspects to that. So we estimate for sending our staff to the state academy roughly is $30,000 to $60,000. And that's not full upfront cost. That includes wages, overtime, those types of things. The actual cost to the current state academy for us that we end up paying the state is around $750. They stay in the state barracks and the state is paying it per diem for their food right now. Part of the problem we run into is the, some of the training they receive, we have questions about and the way they receive it. Many other instructors and cadre have come from California in the past and we've had some issues with that training. And that's, so that's one of the biggest reasons we've developed or started developing our academies. Until recently, the state didn't have a category three academy. They certified NDOC or Department of Corrections did do them. And we ran into a lot of issues with those because those, we had to put them in hotels and pay their per diem and their travel and all that. So it was much more expensive for those. So that's where we started with our category three academy in-house. The state has since started putting a category three on, I think, once a year now. But I think they've only had two. They're also doing a reserve academy, which does us no good because that's really for, say, the community and you want to have a reserve officer and they want to participate in law enforcement, things like that. So somebody has a job, permanent or a full-time job in the community and nights, weekends, they want to work a few hours or special events. That's what the category two academy is. Our category one academy, which is our street level academy, is about the same cost physically for the academy that we pay. But again, it's, they're getting ready to increase the number of hour requirements for that as well in the academy, so that will cost us additional funds. As far as bringing revenue in, we have not estimated any of that. We've really done or geared our academy for Lander County so that we could save some of those costs by hosting our own academy and making sure that we provide the training and what we believe that we need to have. There's state requirements, but the way it's delivered and some of the extras that's provided, we want to make sure that the employees are trained the way Lander County wants them trained. The commission can always set fees. Ultimately, it would have to, for the academies, any costs and fees would come out of our training budgets or our budget that we would have a line item. or our budget that we would have a line item for that the county would have to fund. Currently, we're not adding anything in our budget for the academies we put on because we're putting them on ourselves, and we're just inviting other agencies to attend if they'd like at this point. So we're not charging for those academies at this point. Right now, we're only drawing in from Elko and Pershing, really local entities. Currently, we have a cat three academy going on now that we needed for one person from our agency that we're putting through. We have two from Pershing and one from Elko that have come in. The Pershing individuals are actually staying at a local RV park, and the Elko individual drives back and forth.
I just want to take you back on your question real quick, since I got Robert on this. So basically, you said you spent thirty to sixty thousand dollars annually?
Per person.
That's per person?
And that includes salaries and benefits.
And that's for cat three?
That's for cat one.
Cat one. So you said that they, where you're sending them now, they charge you seven hundred and fifty dollars per person?
The state charges seven fifty per person.
So is that, is that a fee that would resemble what we would charge somebody coming here?
Certainly could, absolutely. And potentially even more.
I'm just trying to get.
Not an outrageous amount, but we absolutely could charge them.
I'm just trying to get an idea of the revenue.
Because the other agencies have to pay that to the state as well.
Right. Okay, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
So you said there's one academy in the state currently? Or is there more?
There, there's several, again, well, there's one run in the state by Carson City, by the post commission itself. That's in Carson City. There's other academies. Las Vegas has their own. There used to be some colleges that had academies. I don't know if they do anymore. Elko does have an academy, a cat three academy, however, they've sent their person to us. So I don't know what the status of their academy is. And I don't know of any category one, street level academies in the northeastern part of the state at this point. But again, we're on line for December to submit that for certification.
So we have done no budget to what the impact would be. I mean, this is maintenance, and like I said, it's, it's, this is quite a bit more to ask for than what we originally thought. I mean, the firehouse to me and the ambulance is definitely a must. But I just, I don't know. I've had a lot of questions on it. Like I said, the first thing was, what's the budget? What's, what's a give back to the taxpayers? You know, is this a, in five to eight years, is this a burden, a cost on the taxpayers? What if we lose net proceeds and everything else? I mean, what's the cost? So we currently can provide all the trainings and that we need, and it's being provided by you guys currently with some extras coming in.
Currently, we're doing our category three academy in the, in our training room that we have. But if we go to the category one, we anticipate additional staff coming in for that. And we can't offer somebody, someplace to stay. And we've had other agencies in the cat three academy, we've had other agencies decline because of the cost that would be for them to stay in hotels or RV parks for sixteen weeks, their staff.
So is, again, Mike, just clarification as we're going, is category one, category, I mean, that doesn't really mean, to me, is that like post? Are you talking like?
It is post. Category three is just a certification level for the jail.
So category one's post?
Category one is also post. Both are post.
Okay.
Category one is a certification level for the street.
So you're talking an extended amount of time?
Yes.
Okay, that makes more sense.
The category three jail level is eight weeks.
Okay.
Category one, street level is sixteen, which they're actually talking about adding additional time.
I was just envisioning one or two days that they're here. And so, I got it. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
And, and I understand your concerns, Commissioner Chopp. Part of, part of this facility actually will house our simulator that we current, well, not that we currently have. The simulator we have is a smaller simulator that's actually housed in a double wide over at the Road and Bridge, which I don't know what the viability and how, what the timeframe that will, you know, remain standing. That is at an end of life. We have budgeted for replacement for it, but the replacement's a larger simulator with more space needed that will not fit in that building. And that's actually what's incorporated into this building as well.
Have we looked at the old firehouse once this is the transition's made?
If I could touch on a few things. One, one critical thing that we need to keep in mind also, Commissioner, is by making the decision to move the fire hall across the street with five to six million dollars, just right now. So that decision being made impacted this project significantly. Baseline infrastructure, access, and stress enough how important that is to take into consideration. So when we're talking back about how the original project was outlined, these are really the, those parameters outside of the bay extensions. Those bays were going to be single bay originally. Those bays went to a double bay to house the existing trucks that you have. And again, I can't stress enough how changing this site to that site kicked this project by five to six million dollars. And then, sorry, what was the other question? I'm sorry.
Why did we decide to move it across the street? That happened before I came on.
Just, I think for, yeah, just kind of congestion, I think.
Some of it was, the discussion was, the original thought, from what I remember, was number one, leaving the fire truck spread throughout the, out the community. And one of my concerns, one thing's, I mean, you go into a, into a city and you see a fire hall and, and the bays, you go through Eureka and that, it also gives a sense of security to the, to the citizens of the town to see that, to know that, you know, that it's there, you know? But a lot of it was the size. That was a very restricted piece of property, and we left trucks everywhere. We were still going to utilize pretty much everything for the fire hall and the volunteers to.
So this allows us to consolidate the fire department and the EMS into one building.
Yeah. And then the EMS was coming on board. We were making the decision whether to take the EMS or not.
And the site plan here, the way this courthouse is located and property we own doesn't allow, with the sheriff's office about it, to it, doesn't allow for what we wanted to build.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I'm sorry, I remembered your question now, the existing firehouse. We did look at that. And it is a, I don't want to put this, it's compromised, I guess is the best way I can put it. There's significant cracking in the actual structural framing itself of that building. Again, a fire hall, supposed to be a type one facility, safest in town, absolutely not the type one, because it was built a long time ago, right? And then those additions to that facility also cause issues. We have a tie into the original, I believe it was the original jail. And so that gas meter is actually housed inside the building between the two additions. So when I was originally asked to look at that facility, and I hate to say it this way, but I, when I was asked what, what I do with the building, and I, I would take it down, unfortunately. We looked at a retrofit cost of county manager, and it was significant. The benefit of that retrofit cost was not conducive with moving forward. Also, being a joint to residential, you really want to do that three hundred and sixty degree impact work. I'm going to do a public infrastructure investment. It needs to help those around it. So are we going to boost those property values by retrofitting that facility? By taking one down or doing something different?
But I mean, for the simulator.
That, and that, again, that's a, you guys own that aspect.
I would like to see some, I want to see the financial piece of it. I just see, I'd see it's making a larger facility, more rooms to, I mean, now we're talking cleaning and, boy, I don't know. It's, I don't, I don't know. I guess for myself, I want to see what, what the long-term impact is for costs. If we're not going to get nobody, we got this huge building, we have added money to, to build and extend. Don't want no hall or nothing to compete against the event center we're going to put and expect revenue from. But I think overall, I think we need to know kind of an estimate of what we are. Are we going to do contractual agreements with these areas? That income comes into the county to relieve it, or is, or, you know, is every cadet going to come through, oh, don't worry about it. We got the housing and that. I'd still think there needs to be a revenue to, to the police academy and the training. Because how, so in the last five years, how many cadets have we sent to the academy, to the level one?
Robert, quick for the sheriff's office. I can't give you an exact number, but I'd say six to the cat one. And I can tell you, I know you're very concerned with the revenue income. I can tell you with, with fair confidence, this is not going to be a revenue, that our academies will not be a revenue generating source for the county realistically. Given the state of law enforcement now, where everyone is looking for somebody that they can't find to hire, the staffing is not there. It's going to be minimalistic for the income. And, you know, it would, it would help cover the cost of lights and water during the academy, really. The only, the only other point I had to add was that because previously, when we had, we had actually budgeted and received budget money to retrofit a building within, actually out at the airport, for the simulator and our, and a training facility that didn't come to fruition because of the state of the building. We had planned on requesting budget funds for an additional building beside us where this was originally going to go. And when this was talked about, that's, we didn't do that to hopefully be incorporated in. I certainly understand if you want to cut those aspects of it, we'll certainly come back and ask for funding for, for a building to house simulator and other training facilities because our facility just is not large enough. We're actually using, in any given time, two-thirds to one-third of our training room for storage. So and that's just unfortunately the state we're in. I don't anticipate large numbers of employees, even we're short staff for category one and category three jail and street levels. We just can't find qualified applicants.
Thank you, Robert. Mikey?
Good morning, Commissioner. My cares for the record. Sorry, losing my voice a little bit today. So Roberts, we are actually going to use the rooms for something similar. So we're doing our EMT class coming up in about two months. That is full. We filled it with twenty students pretty much overnight, and they have mandated ride hours. And EMTs is like twenty-four. You start going up the ladder, it gets more and more. So that will produce some revenue for us. So we're also planning on using the rooms for similar.
How many will stay?
Overnight? I think it depends on how the schedule shakes out, but probably most of them, you know, get a true feel of what EMS is, a twenty-four hour shift.
When we, so what's your, once we do this, the EMTs will be, will stay at the facility, correct?
Mm-hmm.
When they're on their shifts, they, they, they're right there by the ambulance.
Yeah, that's correct.
So how many is on a shift?
Two full-time right now. So you have a EMT and a paramedic all the time.
Well, that, is there any plans for more?
Well, I think it depends on if our call volume expands. You know, if we start hitting the edge of what we can handle in our, in our responses and things like that start to go down, then yeah, we'll have to expand some. I know the South is starting to get more calls, and we'll see how the town grows. And, you know, right now, we're roughly on track for about twelve hundred calls this year, which is a hundred and eighty more than last year. The big thing we're going to try to expand is in our education department. Like I said, we're doing our flagship EMT class in two months, and it filled up overnight. We have a waiting list of ten. So we're going to just do them back to back to back. So that'll probably be our biggest expansion plan is, you know, finding, because that's, you know, per state mandate, it's a hundred and fifty teaching hours. So it's really going to have to be finding the people that can teach that consistently. But right now, there's enough demand from the mines, from the public, to really hopefully have a sustainable program. But I'll have a better answer for you in five months when our flagship class is done. So.
A couple things. So Mikey and his team, they're doing a great job. We're starting to see revenue from them, you know, roughly sixty to seventy thousand dollars a month is what they're bringing in. And I see that growing, which is great. They're, they're killing it. Good job, Mikey. And then the other thing is, we are paying four thousand dollars a month to rent the space they're currently in. So there, there's a small cost savings there that, that would go away. And then I see nothing but, but growth from our EMS. It's, you know, we're starting to figure out kind of the billing system and how, how that works and still taking care of our locals. You know, it's not, we aren't looking at just the, the numbers. We're, we're trying to do the best for everybody, but still utilize the, the best billing practices.
Yeah, yeah. Slowly, slowly it's coming in. It's taken us a little bit to get that kind of kicked off. But hopefully, it's, it's just up from here. And like I said, our education program is going to be hopefully a big one for us. So hopefully, we're not fighting Robert for rooms.
Okay. Any more, Mike? Are there any other questions from the commission?
No, Mike, ask all mine.
Okay, so I'll move into public for comments and questions. Yes, sir.
Wayne Nebiker, again, for the record, what is the environmental liability and the environmental risks of the wash rack?
Hey, I agree, but if we can get people to come up.
Sorry, please.
Sorry about that. Our clerks at us just to make sure that they're, everybody's close to the mic.
Wayne Nebiker, for the record, I'm asking, what is the environmental liabilities of the wash rack there? I know in the mining industry, the environment, the environmental impacts of a wash rack with oil and grease, and it's quite substantial. And, you know, if we're going to use that wash rack to wash other county vehicles and stuff, sand and, and stuff with the magnesium chloride on it and stuff like that, I mean, there, there's a substantial maintenance involved with that.
Thank you, Wayne.
So to answer your question, it'd be the same as it would for a commercial car washing facility, which the only requirement of that is a sand oil separator, that's being missed periodically. And so, to answer your question.
Yes, sir.
Lenny Shapster, for the record, you know, the county built that, where you can dump your sewer and stuff down there at the, that would be a perfect place for the county to put something up like that, if they got to, if they have the land, down by the sewer pond.
To put up what? Like a wash?
Yeah.
A wash bay?
Yeah, they have the room. There's water there.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Lenny. Yes, sir.
Lamaiadger, for the record, so I also have the same kind of question that Wayne had regarding the wash bay. So I start to think around safety, and we start to hit the cold months. So this is kind of the concept, just to be an outdoor wash bay. Because you start to hit freezing temperatures, even just a simple enclosure where we could, you know, keep the, keep everything in, try to keep some of the chill out. Because anybody that's worked around the wash bay, especially in mining, you've got slips, trips, ice. And then, like you said, we got the backboard. We have slips everywhere. So I'd say, you know, if, if we're going to cut from one, you know, if we start getting rid of, you know, if we shorten up the, we'll say the, the maintenance bays or wherever it is, if we could consider an enclosed wash bay, something with a sump pump, something that's aggressive. Because if we're going to be increasing, you know, if, say you bring DOT, you bring all of our vehicles in there, that's going to be a lot of traffic, and we're, we're all that waste goes to as well. But definitely, as a suggestion, I would recommend an enclosed wash bay. I mean, if we're going to consider anything, the safety of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Holman.
If I can make a comment?
Yes, go ahead, please.
One thing I'd like to point out that maybe didn't get broadcasted in the presentation is, this facility is not designed for today. We're looking at a facility of this nature. This is a thirty-year design perspective. So I didn't quite touch on that as much as I should have. Your BFD is a volunteer right now. And thirty years from now, I would absolutely expect it to be a full-time staff. That helps your insurance, as you all know. You commissioners know exactly what I'm talking about. That insurance rating is so important. It impacts all of your residents. It impacts everybody. So without fire and EMS, your, your rating is obviously extremely degraded, right? And so with that, when you're doing an infrastructure upgrade of this nature, we are absolutely not just looking at today. We're, we're looking at your thirty-year long-term, so that you're not building another facility, you're adding on to that facility. So I want to make sure that point's clear. And then Robert's absolutely right. There was a second building that was looked at over here. So there was a few million dollars looking at this other facility over here. We had an eight million dollar retrofit for the existing building. And so without this site swing situation, we're really kind of pretty close to that original approach, but we're getting quite a bit more out of it. So.
Yeah, thank you for that, that clarity. How much does it, what's the actual cost to bore from that side to over here?
We're looking at a quarter million dollar bore.
Okay, so two hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, and that's a, that's a really good point is to. Put it out there 30 years. Where are we at 30 years? Or do we have a full time fire staff? What is the population? How much has it grown by? Because it's all, because if not, you're gonna be building something more, you know, to be able to handle it, so that's a good perspective. Thank you. Any other questions from, yes?
Jamie Harbinger, for the record. Um, just along the same lines as the event center, uh, looking forward and we try and be a self reliant type, uh, community. Solar panels. There's lots of room for that maybe. I don't know if there's any opportunities for reusing gray water. If, are you familiar with lead?
Yeah.
You've heard of lead? Okay, so that would be really, let's see what we could do there. I mean, there's a lot of little tweaks we can make that earn a lot of money. It would be really good for less water use, less electricity use and I don't even know what our, uh, capacity is now for. Expansion through empty energy and what they have available for Battle Mountain. Those kinds of things, I just wanted to mention.
Thanks, ma'am. We had, uh, uh, yeah, a comment there? I'll get to you next there. Okay.
Yeah, Robin, for the record. So I think this fire hall is one thing we need to look at, goes right in line with our convention center that we're looking at as well. You're talking about bringing in some big events, big rodeo events, big roving events, things like that, which we're gonna need, our EMS crew has to be at every one of these events. Okay? Which means we're gonna more likely have to expand the EMS crew, more than likely expand the fire department at some point. And I mean, a lot of the stuff that I've heard when I come to these meetings is how we wanna grow Battle Mountain. Grow Lander County. Right now. In my eyes, our fire hall is way too small. For a big of area that we got, that they gotta cover out here. I mean, I've seen multiple fires out here that takes 20, 30 minutes for some of these guys to get to. So a more central location. An expanded fire hall. Goes along with our convention center with the events we wanna do. And I like the fact that Aaron just pointed out, this is a 30 year look. Where are we gonna be in 30 years? Truthfully, with everything that they wanna put in here, I don't know if it's gonna be big enough for what you guys have planned.
Okay, I agree. Thank you, Chad. Uh, yes, sir.
John Brady, for the record, um, do you guys look into mines around here for sponsorship? They would love to jump on, community based things like this. Always excited, always wanna do this for your community. And then you tie in your vision, or your convention center. Well, we need this before that because we need more staff for the bigger things. You know what I mean? And they will, I'm gonna promise, you know, X amount of dollars, but. You have what, seven mines around here? And they're all the same guy, but still, you know. Some to think about.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, we're gonna be wrapping it up real shortly. Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay, so I will hear a motion and just make sure that the motion, uh, kind of states what we. All right. So I guess we're just approving the, the agendaized amount is what we're actually looking at right now.
So go with it.
Yeah.
I motion to approve the proposed plans for the Battle Mountain Fire Hall and estimated amounts. The phase one improvements for the entrance on SR 305 at 1,372,056 dollars. Phase two is site and utility at 2,592,763 dollars. In phase three, the building is. Seventeen million, 600,123 dollars for a total estimated amount of 21,564,942 dollars.
Okay, and we have our motion. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there we go. So we're gonna take a real, we're gonna take a quick break, uh, 10 minutes and we'll be back.
This conference will now be recorded.
1.19. Are we recording yet? We're good? Okay, so for review, consideration of possible action on a business improvement program request in an amount of 6,597 dollars and 24 cents. For insurance and more LLC for new windows, facade improvements and gravel in the rear yard for property located at 175, 185 and 195 South Scott Street in Battle Mountain.
What number, Brian?
Uh, 1.19.
Oh, 1.19, I was on that, sorry.
Okay.
Charlie Shepherd, for the record, and I'm, I'm here representing Jody Moore from Farmers Insurance. She's at a corporate meeting today and couldn't make it. And, um, she, you'll have all the information about what she's requesting and, um. All of her, uh, improvements are eligible improvements. From this business improvement fund. If you have any questions, I hopefully can answer them.
Okay. All right, Commissioner, any questions on this item?
Hold on, I'm looking.
I do have one comment. I believe that I, Shelby reached out to Jody. It was on the, uh, the gravel in the back. I think the, uh, the idea behind this improvement program was for, you know, visible felt impacts. Um, and I'm not sure if Jody, um, got an answer back or something, but I just wanted to make the commission aware of that. That was my one and only comment on.
That, that was my one question as well, and I was looking at our packet that we hand out to businesses and we might make it more clear in the future. Uh, because it does state installation, maintenance, uh, of repair of land, landscaping must include maintenance plan with application that. We need to really make sure that our businesses understand that it's a visible felt. Impact, because if you're, if we're applying for some gravel in the back that nobody ever sees, then it necessarily wouldn't pertain to. The concept of what we're trying to do, so. Um, as far as the facade and the windows, uh, I think it's a great thing. I think it's really gonna. Makes the place look nice and, uh, those are my comments. Any other comments, questions? Shelley, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I just wanted to, oh, Shelby, not for the record. Uh, I did, I did reach out, reach out to Jody and I really, uh, tried to stress that this program is specifically to. Improve the outside look of your building and your property. Um, and so. It, it's up to you guys whether you want to approve that or not, but I did let her know that that might be something.
Okay. Okay. Did you guys have anything else you'd like to add? Yes, sir.
Lenny Shepherd, um, I just, I have a question on. Uh, improvements on it. The, the sidewalks went right down to. Her property and they quit. They didn't go on down to Main Street. And I, I just wondered if the county's gonna continue that on this cement project sidewalk?
Is this, are you, does it, does the sidewalk run on like, you're talking on the front side of her property where you would access? I don't know. Is that part of State House of Schools? Can anybody answer that question? Tony?
Yeah, eventually, but it's fine on the hatch and Main Street, potentially walk up.
So that would be something? Okay, so it is, is something that for future plans that we're planning on doing, okay?
My, my only question there is if she's gonna get somebody to go in and pave that. Piece between where the county property line is, where the sidewalk's supposed to be and. Her, her property, she's gonna have to let that go and just try to maintain it. See what I mean? I mean, if, if she goes.
It's just like any other property now. We've done and did that, but we, we make it right and bring it back to whatever, but that's really good.
Okay, cause if she had to go pave that and then they go rip it out and put the.
Right.
Cement in it.
If we go in and there's asphalt where we'll saw it and all that.
Okay.
But I do believe that's a couple of years out. That's, uh, we have, we have a couple of other phases of this. You know, Safe Roots to School program that we're gonna implement before we get there, so it'd be a few years out.
Okay.
So, so you're approving the, the glass and the stone?
Yes, well, that's, uh, if we have a majority vote to approve it, yes, that's what it looks like.
But not the gravel in the back.
Well, yes. Which is only nine. Well, that's entirely, that's entirely.
Which is only 975 dollars.
That's entirely up to us, so.
Yeah.
But, uh, so if there's no other questions, is there any, uh, public questions or comments on this item? Okay, I'll hear a motion. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, the business improvement budget. Empty, so we watch on this one.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, is there a motion? Okay, with that, I will make the motion that we improve the business improvement program request in an amount of. What would the amount, guys? Can somebody total, total up without the gravel, what we were looking at?
Minus 975. If you're not doing the gravel.
Yeah. Hold on, I gotta get back.
975 for the gravel.
All right, and she's asking for.
6,597 dollars and 24 cents.
That's the total amount, minus the.
975.
975, okay.
Yeah.
And, and, and her, yeah, yep, the church, the church wasn't as much. She thought she was gonna get three loads and she only got one, so it was only 325 dollars and that. Cut in half is only 162.50, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah, right.
Somebody wanna give me a number?
I will.
Or Bill, can I approve it just with the basis of what was presented in the pack without the gravel? Or do we need?
Do it in the amount.
You're approving 487 of that. This is what it comes out to, take the 97. Divided by two, I do the half.
So, but, uh, the 975 was included in that total of 659724? 2,811.
This is Jody.
Hold on, Jody's here.
Hi.
Yeah, I'm with, we're with you, Jody.
So, so then.
So what's that? Are you there, Jody?
Well, she's got on here that half of her windows is 3,609 dollars and 74 cents.
So tell me that number again.
3,609 dollars and 74 cents. The total for her windows was 7,219 dollars and 48 cents. So half of that was 3,609 dollars and 74 cents. She got a, a quote for the stone from Scott Malone, which I have here. If you need to see it, at $5,000, half of that is 2,500 dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so taking the.
Hold on, one, one person at a time, please. Yes, Shelby.
Uh, 6,109 dollars and 74 cents.
Will be the total, total amount of the job.
Right, no.
Oh, the county's match. Okay, thank you. So I'll make a motion that we. Go ahead with the business improvement program request, uh, in the amount of 6,109 dollars and 74 cents for insurance and more LLC. For new windows, facade improvements, uh, for properties located at 175, 185 and 195 South Scott Street in Battle Mountain.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
I apologize, Commissioner. Next time we will have them number that.
That's all right. Okay, so we're gonna get back to 1.5 for information only presentation on the Nevada deferred compensation plan. Good morning, guys.
Good morning. Members of the commission and staff. And members of the public, um, let me get here real quick. Did you load it? Yeah? Or do I need to put this? Is it, is it loaded already? Oh. There it is. Yeah?
That should be good.
Okay.
Is yours sticking?
No. I thought, I, I didn't know if you loaded it on the laptop or not.
No, no.
I can't see, is that, is that the?
Not the one.
That one there? Perfect. All right. Well, good morning, uh, members of commission and, uh, members of Lander County staff. My name is Rob Beamer. Uh, for the record, I serve as the executive officer. And, um, administrator for the state of Nevada's Public Employees Deferred Compensation Program, which is kinda. The 401K plan for the, for the state, uh, that we allow. Uh, not only state employees, Nevada System of Higher Education employees, but all in any, uh, local political subdivisions to participate in. Uh, we are the sister program to the defined contribution component to, uh, Nevada PERS, which all of you are, I'm sure are familiar with. Uh, which is our beautiful, awesome, robust pension plan that all of us love so much, right? And so, um. I think I, last time I was here, I shared with you that, um. I am here, I was here on assignment by our governor, uh, Governor Lombardo. Um, they charged me with, uh, his staff has charged me with making sure that. We get out to all the cities and counties and utility districts, general proven districts across the state. To make sure that they know that they have access to the state of Nevada Public Employees Deferred Compensation Program, which we have. Uh, multiple people across the state have kinda coined as the NDC plan, Nevada Deferred Comp. Um. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, at that time, you guys, uh, approved the program to be offered here. In Lander County and appreciate the opportunity to be invited back. To, uh, give you a little presentation on the key points of deferred compensation. How it works together with, uh, our pension plan and the attributes of that, right? Um, and then also how, uh, employees can best utilize that. Uh, to make sure that they're developing financial wellness for themselves, more importantly, their families. Uh, with me, I brought our friends from Voya Financial. Uh, you guys are gonna get to hear, um, how. We are the, the relationship that we have with Voya Financial is a contractual relationship. Uh, we contract with them to, uh, utilize their, uh, multi-million robust, uh, state of the art record keeping system, of course. Uh, they, they handle all of our record keeping for us. If the state was to try and do that on our own, it would cost us probably 15 to 20 million dollars. To develop the, the plan, uh, or our record keeping system, uh, minimum, and then probably another one to two million dollars a year to maintain it. Uh, we have found from a cost, uh, versus rewards standpoint, uh, very much. Commended all of you for looking at that, right? That, we do that at the state. Uh, probably even more detail because we have the legislative body and the executive branch body looking at everything that we do. Um, and so, uh, we have found that by contracting those services out, uh, we get a lot more bang for our buck and. The end result is that we try to keep the program costs as low as we possibly can so that you and I, as participants, government employees that work. Uh, and participate in this program. That we can, uh, put more of our money to work for ourselves and better, uh, help us with retirement, right? Um, I'd like to introduce Mr. Don, John Verducci, who is, uh, the representative from Voya. He is, serves as a. As a, the Voya Retirement Advisor, uh, for Voya. He's one of three individuals that Voya Financial has, um. Provided to us to be, uh. Really work with all of the participants in our plan. He's dedicated just solely to our plan, which is great. And I have assigned him to work with Lander County and all of the, um, employees here in Lander County when we get this up and running. Uh, to my left is probably. The most important guy, uh, uh, that we have, uh, Mr. Bishop Estine. I tell everybody Bishop's kinda like Mary Poppins. He's practically perfect in every way. Anyway, he is my, he's kinda my go-to person at, uh, Voya Financial. He's my, our client relationships, uh, relations VP. And anytime I have an issue, he's my conduit to all the resources at Voya Financial that, uh, that we utilize. Uh, Bishop and I talk on a weekly basis, sometimes daily. I know he hates that, but. And I, my, kinda my biggest job is to manage their contract and make sure that they're providing a level of service. That meets our service guarantees we have built in the contract as well as. Um, as well as making sure that, um. If there's any issues, we resolve them and, and make the program as robust and advantageous for. Our participants, our employees across the, the state. Just as a reminder, uh, again, we don't only just service. The over almost 19,000, uh, state employees that we have, but all of the employees in Nevada System of Higher Education throughout the state. And then we have over a hundred, uh, local political subdivisions. Out of the 19 counties, we have all but two. That participate in our program. Washoe and Clark have their own, uh, plans that they, that they, uh, manage their, on their own. I will say that we are the, the cheapest of all those plans and, uh, we're the largest of all those plans and so. Uh, the value that your employees get, that you guys get as a, as a county organization by joining the state's. And so the value that your employees get, that you guys get as a as a county organization by joining the state's plan really helps not only the employees out here, but employees across the the state as well. And the reason why I say that is because most counties, most cities, especially the smaller ones, our they they would never be able to get the kind drive the kind of value that we can drive being part of a, you know, together, being part of a one point three billion dollar program with over sixty thousand participants in the in the in the plan. We have three plans, actually. So we have our main four fifty-seven B, which is I tell everybody kind of like our 401 K plan. It's classified as a four fifty-seven B, which is represents the code in in the Internal Revenue Code that governs our plan, right? We have certain rules and stuff in a four fifty-seven B that are particular to us that all the other savings plans, 401 K, 403 B, IRA, all of those don't have, right? And one of the the main things is rules is that all those other plans are bound by a excise tax that's like a pre-retirement excise tax that they can't touch that money prior to age fifty-nine and a half. Most of you probably have heard that, right? And if they do, they're assessed a ten percent penalty on top of all the tax that's owed on that money if it's if it's pre-tax. And so the state of Nevada's deferred comp plan, because it's a four fifty-seven B plan and operates under that code, we're the only plan that's exempt from that ten percent excise tax. So what enables our program or our participants to start utilizing their money is when they actually separate service from the entity that sponsors it, right? So in this case, it would be Lander County. So for example, the biggest contributors to deferred comp plans are wonderful folks in police, fire, and in public safety. And so those individuals, we know based on data that we receive from Nevada PERS and other defined contribution pension plans, defined contribution plans and defined benefit plans across the country. We know that those employees tend to only work maybe make careers of may maybe twenty to twenty-five years on average, right? And so a lot of these folks are retiring in their fifties or even some some in their late forties. And so when they retire, what we also know is the majority of those folks go back to work, but some of them folks need to utilize these and have this money available and they want to utilize it without having a penalty. And so deferred comp actually affords them the the ability to do that, which is great. So just wanted to introduce kind of our team here. I felt it was necessary for me as the director to come back and address all of you, mainly so that I can hopefully give you confidence in this young man right here, who is going to be here for all of the employees. If anybody has questions or want to want to meet with John individually to talk about their personal situation. We're all kind of like snowflakes, whether you like that verbiage or not, right? We are all different, right? And so I mean, our situations are different with regard to not only us personally, but our families as well. And so John's here to kind of as a dedicated resource to the county to help you guys with managing that and help employees understand and prepare for not only retirement, but during the career phase of their life, right? When they have these crucial financial things that come up in their life where they know they're going to have to make a decision, how in the heck am I going to pay for my kid? Just finding out my kid needs braces or, you know, how am I going to pay for this child that that I'm about ready to this family I'm about ready to start, right? Deferred Comp can really be a help in helping that so that they don't get off track and don't get behind in their financial wellness. So with that, I have a I have a presentation. I'm going to skip through and just highlight some of the key components of I that I think is data that everybody or in education that everybody needs to to hear and help you understand how to best utilize the deferred comp program. I I I kind of sit on this slide for a second and I'd like to tell people that really when this program was created back in the seventies, the governor at the time, which was Richard Bryan, he actually thought it was great. He he encouraged it. He wanted to see something that was available to all government employees across the state, not just the state state of Nevada employees and N G employees. And so we we actually. Plan for your future.
You're good? Okay. Sorry about that.
Sorry. So we've kind of kept the tagline, this is your plan for your future. When I was appointed to this position in two thousand fourteen by then Governor Sandoval, Brian Sandoval, one of the thing key things that he hired me for was to kind of do a compliance on of how the plan was being run, how it was being managed. And one of the key things that I pointed out was that our would probably be good for us to rebrand our program so that people know a little bit more about it, right? And so we tried to have fun with our branding. We want you to envy your retirement. You guys should all laugh at that. Where we're located is right in the Capitol Annex in Carson City. Our office is located just behind the Capitol in the Library and Archives Building for any of you that want to know that. I've also listed the two PERS located. Uh, that really becomes, I think, something that we don't we don't target enough in help people understand is, you know, especially when you're preparing for retirement, this pension plan that we have available to us that we contribute a lot of money to, right? Thirty-three and a half percent for regular members and fifty percent to police for police fire folks, right? That's a lot of contra money that we contribute. I know we have some friends from our minds and stuff in the in the audience today and maybe other employment demographics, but I would challenge all of you, right, that that are here. How many of you have worked for other other entities beside what you're doing right now? Most of you will raise your hand, right? I would I would ask you, you know, ask yourself how many of those entities paid into a retirement plan on top of your salary over thirty-three and a half percent or fifty percent of of your salary into that retirement plan every single pay period, right? It's a pretty robust program that we have. We don't see those kind of contribution levels even in government pension plans across the state. And so a lot of people say, well, yeah, we contribute all this, but what we know is PERS puts out this annual report every year. And we know that they in there, there's some 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 participant data that we look at at deferred comps. So we know how to best market our program. And one of those things is every year we see the average first participant only that that's retiring, receiving a benefit only working eighteen to twenty years of service credit and only receiving maybe forty-five to fifty percent income replacement for their pension. That's pretty amazing when you even just at that, when you when you take into contrast that when social security was created, that it was only really created to only replace up to twenty to thirty percent of a person's income. Yet how many of us know people in our own lives, probably, right? That utilize social security as their sole source of retirement income, right? I think all of us could probably pick one or two people out that we know, right? And so the beautiful thing about deferred comp is it becomes a supplemental plan to help us get that replacement income at a level when we go to retire that is suitable for our for ourselves and our families. And so a little bit about my office. As you can see, I have a huge staff. We literally operate a one point three billion dollar program with three people, those three individuals that you see on the on the screen there, yours truly. And then right down below that, the little gal holding the dog, again, another that's Micah Salerno. She serves as my deputy administrator. Some of the staff members have gotten to talk to her and got to meet her. And then Ms. Linda Thomason is the other young lady. She's the one who handles all of our the routing of all of our enrollments, our changes. Anytime we have changes, that's really who makes the clock work, right? And so people ask, how, why do you have such a small staff? And again, we try to keep costs as low as we possibly can so that you and I, as participants, can keep as much money in our in our plans as well and earn interest on that. So what is the N D C program? Really, it's a tax-deferred voluntary savings plan, so retirement plan. It's governed again under section four fifty-seven B of the Internal Revenue Code. And then our statutory authority is listed in N R S under section two eighty-seven. You can find all the rules and and how our plans are planned is designed. It's really kind of one of the most valuable voluntary benefits that most in government employees have available to them. Anybody that's in deferred comp will tell you, man, I wish I would have contributed more. I wish I would have started this more or sooner. I wish somebody would have told me about this sooner, right? What I never hear is, damn it, I wish I wouldn't have started that deferred call plan, right? That's something I never heard. It really becomes a crucial component to Nevada PERS, like I mentioned earlier, where we utilize deferred comp as a way to supplement our PERS pension so we can get that replacement income from the average level of, you know, forty-five to fifty percent up to sixty, seventy percent, eighty percent was what we try to target. So it's a that's kind of a good benchmark for everybody and deferred comp kind of helps you with that. Real quick, it also helps you to save the amount of of tax that you potentially pay, not only bi-weekly when you get paid, but also annually when you file your taxes. And even when you go to retire, there's potential tax benefits. One of the only programs that gives you triple tax benefit, which is which is kind of cool, right? That and HSA are the two programs that we know of that are usually available to government employees. If you if you have an HSA component tied to your health insurance that give you that triple tax benefit that you can take advantage of. Just want to highlight our record keeper, Voya Financial. Voya is a big giant insurance company and record keeping company that is one of probably the top four plans or four companies or I wouldn't even narrow it down to three companies really that are in the industry. We go out to bid for this contract every five years. It's written in our statute that we have to. And we just finished up that process this year and I'm happy to tell you that and announce that we retained Voya Financial for another five years. The contract we were able to negotiate brings even more value to our participant base. One particular point that I want to make is that we do utilize Voya. We utilize one of their investment options as a proprietary option. It's our fixed rate option. So in that plan, it's kind of like a general account offering where you get kind of like a C D, right? You get paid you get paid a certain percentage of interest for whatever money you have in the plan and for whatever time you have that money in the plan or in that investment option. Currently, right now, that guaranteed minimum rate of interest is three percent. And as of January one, going forward for the whole length of the contract, it'll be three point six percent. So we pretty much you can if you if you invest in our in our just in that one investment option, you could feasibly be guaranteed at least three point six percent in in our plan. I will tell you, those that utilize our robust core investment lineup of different securities-based investments do considerably way more better than that. We have a whole investment lineup of different investment categories where we actually go out and we do the work for the participant base. We go out and we do all the research, can collect all the data utilizing a third-party investment consulting firm and we hand select investment options in different investment categories so and bring those forward to our our participant base to be able to invest in. So we kind of do the selection process for you. You just have to pick which of those investment categories you want to invest in. And you have this guy here and we have a call center that you can reach somebody twenty-four seven, pretty much. I'm sorry, online twenty-four seven. Call center is open five A M to six P M, yeah, Pacific time. So we always have somebody available to help guide participants on how they can manage their account appropriately, right? And most of us aren't super great investment managers. We a lot of people you talk to them and like, man, I don't have any desire to and learn how to do this and I have no desire to manage it on my own. I trust professionals to do that for me. And so we have that available to you. Plus, we have a managed account program that for those individuals that just say, I want to completely have have hands off and have a team of professionals and I'm cool paying them a small fee to do that, manage it for me. We have that available to them as well. So a little bit about Voya. They also assist us. I do delegate other things to them to assist us with just for administrative purposes, right? So there's certain things that I actually delegate to them and then I monitor how those processes go. Saving in in the N D C program, when you when you enroll in the program, you can enroll with starting with as little as thirty-five dollars per pay period, right? All the way up to the annual deferral limit that the IRS sets for every single year for these plans. This year currently, it's twenty-three thousand dollars. And it we just like literally last week got a notice that it was going to go up by five hundred, by five hundred. So twenty-three, five is what the deferral limit will be in twenty twenty-five. If you are age fifty or turning age fifty in twenty twenty-four, your deferral limit is actually a little bit higher. So there's a catch-up provision, a fifty-plus catch-up provision that you can take advantage of. The deferral limit for that in twenty twenty-four is thirty thousand five hundred dollars. So anybody who's turning age fifty or is age fifty or more, right, can contribute thirty-five, I'm sorry, thirty thousand five hundred dollars and that's going to go up an additional thousand, I believe, right? Okay, 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 so. Yeah, gotcha. So it's going to go up next year as well. And then the four fifty-seven three, we have an actual special catch-up provision for those individuals that maybe didn't take advantage of this program in their early part of their careers or maybe they're nearing the, you know, career phase, end of the career phase of their life. We have a three-year special catch-up provision. We call it the special four fifty-seven catch-up provision, which allows them in the three consecutive years prior to reaching normal retirement age to contribute potentially up to double the annual deferral limit. So that would be like forty-six grand. And why that's important is a lot of us, a lot of government entities pay out their employees when they retire, especially the junior employees, right? They may pay out like all their accumulated annual time or paid time off, comp time, maybe sick time or special sick time, like in the state, we have two different sick pools that we can and we can qualify to get paid out on. And those those payouts that we see just across the state are anywhere on average between twenty to thirty thousand dollars on average. And so what a lot of people don't realize when it comes to that special payout, right, of it's classified in the IRS's eyes as supplemental income. So they have to file a supplemental income schedule when they file their taxes for the year. And that's usually they're paying tax on that at about thirty-nine percent usually. And so a way around that is utilize the catch-up and that money, put as much of that money as we possibly possibly can into deferred comp. And then when they go to retire, they can go ahead and utilize that money as by taking normal distributions and only paying paying normal income tax on that money. So we literally show people how to save ten thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars by utilizing that catch-up, okay? I want to skip ahead a little bit to just tell you guys, get to a couple of these. So this gives you an idea of somebody with and without an N D C plan. Really, the bottom line here is that a hundred dollars in pre-tax retirement savings really only truly costs this person about seventy-two dollars. That's how pre-tax contributions work, right? Is you're utilizing that money would normally be given to the IRS for federal income tax, right? And you're putting it into a savings account for yourself. So really, and 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 really what it boils down to is a hundred dollar contribution that you make may only cost you seventy to seventy-five, eighty dollars, depending on what tax bracket you're in. But you're getting credit for a hundred dollars in your savings account, right? And so you're utilizing that money that you would normally be giving to the IRS to earn interest on. The more you contribute, the better offset and tax liability is. So for example, a three hundred dollar contribution, you could see a decrease of your paycheck of maybe a hundred and ninety to two hundred and ten dollars, but you're getting credit for three hundred dollars in your savings account. So I said, Bart, if I was to give you a hundred dollar bill right now, all I want you to do is give me seventy-two bucks back. Would you take that deal? Pretty easy, right? Pretty easy, right? Hopefully, everybody, everybody would consider that. And so that's the beauty of pre-tax. The cool thing about deferred comp is not only can you contribute both pre-tax, but you can also, we have a Roth component in our plan as well. So you can contribute after tax Roth. And then when you go to utilize that money, if it's after age fifty nine and a half and it's, um, that's Roth component, the rules are a little different on that. Um, so you have to be age fifty nine and you have to have been contributing to the plan for at least five years. Then you can potentially get that money tax free and any interest that you earned on that money would be tax free as well. So depending on your situation, right, either one might be better or worse for you. Uh, and you can switch it anytime. You're not bound to it, which is nice. Okay? All right. Um, a lot of people say, well, how is it that these folks get these huge balances in their deferred comp plan? Like I had a gal who, I tell the story quite a bit. I had a gal that, um, worked for library and archives. Uh, she, right in the same building we did, she started off at, with the state, uh, way back when she was working, uh, when she was going to school in high school, the state used to hire and some counties and cities used to do this too, used to hire student workers part-time, right? And then they would kind of train them. And then when they came out of school, they would hire them full-time into full-time positions. We used to see a lot of that. Um, and so this gal actually did that and she came into my office. Uh, she had worked thirty six years for the state, uh, and she went from being a full-time employee or a part-time employee, full-time employee, then became a certified librarian, librarian, one, two, three, four, and then ended her career as a deputy administrator. And, uh, and she came in and said, listen, I'm about ready to retire. I have this beautiful deferred comp plan. How do I go about using it? I said, well, come in, we'll just take a look. I looked, pulled her account up and she had two point four million dollars in her account, right? And I had to, I asked her, I said, what do you do again for the state? And she told me and I said, so tell me the story here. How did you make this happen? And she said, well, she goes, when I was young, my father worked for Pacific Union Railroad. And he used to tell me and all the time, my sister and I, all the time. Whenever you get a, a increase in salary, if you just take fifty percent of that increase money you haven't even utilized yet, and you just increase your savings, whatever savings vehicle you're using, right? By, by that amount, you will never have to worry about money when you retire. And she says, I put that into practice and this is the result of it. And I said, man, do you mind if I share that story with her? She's absolutely, uh, so, uh, this is a great example of that. Somebody before raise and after a raise that I like to just kind of point out. This person was contributing fifty dollars to their, their NDC account. So their pre-tax NDC contribution was fifty dollars. They got a raise merit step increase, um, could be a job classification change where they, their salary went up, whole increase. Um, and they just, with that increase, they went ahead and doubled their contribution. So it went from fifty to a hundred dollars. End of the day, this person actually was able to get paid an additional twenty six to thirty six dollars uh, per pay period more with the increase, but they doubled their deferred comp contribution. That's how you get those kind of balances in your deferred comp. What does that look like? So this graph I love to show because at the bottom, it tells you the contribution level that, that you can, you can choose, right? And if you did that over a twenty five year period, assuming a, again, a, a lower rate of return, seven percent rate of return. These are the types of balances you could have depending upon the, the contribution amount that you're contributing. So pretty, we do pretty well. Um, it stays to pay and it stays to, uh, uh, it pays to stay invested in deferred comp. So one of the things that when we created the plan and one thing we, we still do to this day is we want to make sure that this plan is just as good for active employee or retirees as it is for active employees, right? So if you're retired and you want to utilize the, the plan and get reap the benefit of the low cost of investment options, low cost of the plan, plus the, um, the interest earning capabilities that we have, the, the interest guarantees that we have. You can actually stay in the plan even as a retiring manager account, which is nice. And so we don't boot anybody out of the plan, um, unless, uh, they have a small de minimis account. Then we sometimes will push those folks out unless they call us and say, no, I want to stay in the plan. Um, we just don't want to lose track of them is why we do that. Last thing I want to just talk about, uh, if I have time, am I cool? Is cool time? Yeah. The last thing I want to talk about is something that we do, um, with the, with all of our government entities, especially those government entities that offer to their employees, uh, the Nevada PERS contributions um, and contribution plans where you can have the employer pay a hundred percent of the contribution, or you can choose to have the employee share in that, right? We call it the employee employer contribution level. Um, what we did, and this is something that we noticed in conducting just multiple focus groups across the state. Um, that people, our, our government employees across the state truly don't understand the difference between those two PERS contribution models, right? They have questions about it. Usually when they're going through their onboarding, they get this stack of paper, right? And usually they have to make a decision and usually the HR folks that are doing that are saying, you know, this is what most people do is they contribute employee employer until they get vested after five years. And then they consider switching to employer if it's right for them, right? Um, we hear that a lot across the state. And so we came up with this, this, um, and it's, it might be a little difficult to see this, but we came up with this side by side comparison to help people with making that choice. Um, so we do that, we kind of can help guide you on that and help you understand how that might benefit you going forward, um, help you understand how the calculations are, are made with that. And then we have, what we've done is we've put together, uh, some, some side by side comparisons of individuals in different uh, employment demographics. So someone at maybe a high level executive type position, somebody at a entry level, uh, position. So Linda here is an administrative assistant, right? Just starting with, with the state or with the government entity that you're working, or she's working for. And you can see her gross income and how much she contributes to PERS under each model. And then how much her pay would be after taxes are taken out, right? And so it helps people understand what plan they're going to get the most, uh, net income from, right? Uh, that means spendable income helps them to make that decision and what they're giving up as well, potentially in making that decision. We do, and then we do have a third, uh, option here, or I mean, a third example of somebody kind of middle of the road, uh, that helps them with that. If you're still confused, we've come up with four questions that we feel can help you make this decision. Uh, if you answer yes to the majority of these questions, then maybe employer paid, uh, the employer paid contribution plan is the best for you. If you answer the no to the majority of those questions, then maybe you should consider the employee employer paid, uh, first contribution. Uh, this is a helping people understand what tier in Nevada PERS that they are, are in based on when they hired. So there's three different tiers, tier one, tier two and tier three. Anybody hired after July one of two thousand fifteen is in tier three. Anybody hired before January one of two thousand ten is a tier one and anybody hired in between is in tier two. It's that simple. Police fire, we didn't forget about you guys and gals. Um, we, uh, put the exact same tiers for them as well. Um, and the different service credit multiplying factors that help us determine what your benefits uh, going to be when you become eligible to receive a benefit. And then this just gives you a side by side comparison of somebody in tier two, in tier three, and the equal, uh, comparison to someone under the police fire model of what they can expect in a benefit. Just so you can understand the value of your, of your purse pension. Cause what we have found is that when we talk to government employees across the, the state, they truly don't understand the total compensation of their, of their, what they get from their employer. And what it helps, what we find is if we can help them understand that, it helps with not only recruitment, but it also helps with retention. So we heard earlier someone reporting on how hard it is to find law enforcement officers, right? It's not just you guys, like we're, we're experiencing the same thing in the state as well. Um, and same thing with folks in police fire or in, in the fire areas too. And, uh, and what we have found is now that we doing a better job at helping people understand their total compensation that they're getting for this, for this job, because it's the number one complaint we have about working for a government entity is they don't pay enough, right? And in all actuality, when you really look at the total compensation, it's probably far better than what they would get if they work for a corporate entity. So, uh, we help people understand that. And then we put this cool QR code in there. So those of you that actually want to do the full presentation and the full, uh, workshop, uh, you can scan that and, um, and bring it right up on your mobile device if you want to, uh, view it on demand. And then I've also put another, um, uh, QR code there. If you wanted to know anything about HSAs or HRAs, flexible spending accounts, other accounts that you can utilize to help offset your tax liability, that's a great presentation. It's, uh, actually sponsored by Public Employee Benefits Program of the state of Nevada. But they gave me permission to give it to you guys and let you check it out as well. Uh, again, about our, where we, where we're located, um, our call center is, uh, again, open five AM to six PM to specific time, uh, pretty much Monday through Friday, excluding stock market holidays. Uh, they are closed during that time, but you can get on access online anytime you want, which is great. And then just I would leave you with, don't put off until tomorrow, what, uh, what you can do today. Uh, a great famous quote from Benjamin Franklin, um, the biggest complaint I have from people is that they procrastinate in doing this and then they get ten, twelve, ten, fifteen, twenty years into their career. And they're like, damn, why didn't I do that sooner, right? And so, um, you guys have a wonderful benefit available to you that our county leadership uh, has, has viewed it as being beneficial and then just another way to enhance your, uh, benefits here in Lander County. Uh, we welcome you. Um, we're here for all of you, uh, to help you and, and help you develop that financial wellness as we, uh, continue on, on this journey, uh, to and through retirement. So with that, I would open it up for questions from anybody.
Commission, have any questions?
Do you have a time limit? Like, do they have to be involved in it with, for like five years before they can actually draw on it or?
You're a hundred percent vested immediately, uh, when you start contributing to it, unlike our defined benefit plan, right? Where the state is paying, I'm sorry, the county is paying, uh, all the contributions on behalf of the, the participant. Uh, or they're on the hook for that. Some participants pay a portion and the county pays a portion, right? Um, so yeah, there's no vesting period in deferred comp because it's a hundred percent your funds. Um, so it becomes vested immediately when you contribute it, which is great.
And elected officials can do it too?
Yeah, elected officials can do it too. So one thing that I do want to point out is we have our four fifty seven plan. And then for elected officials that might be in a situation where they are collecting a purse pension already, right? They can actually, if, if like in a lot of our elected officials in their electoral contract, it's a requirement for our government entity to pay into Nevada PERS on their behalf, right? And if they're already getting a benefit, a PERS benefit, right? Uh, our governor is a great example of that. He's somebody who worked in, in, uh, Clark County as the sheriff for thirty, I forget how many years now, but he receives a max benefit of seventy five percent re, in, uh, replacement income of his three consec, or three years of consecutive, highest consecutive years of income. And, uh, there's an exemption in the PERS statute that allows us to take that, what we would normally be paying in the PERS and pay that into another suitable plan that he could actually utilize. So we gave it to PERS, it wouldn't do him any good, right? And so, um, we actually created a four oh one A plan that he, he and other elected officials participate in. We have some justices and some district judges that are participating in that plan too, because they're in the same, uh, same situation. And there's, so we have a, a, the way for, for us to accommodate those folks as well. And then we also for your, you guys talked about this beautiful complex that you guys are looking at building for your county, which I think is great. Um, but what we have found across the state, and I don't know if you've looked into this, but the majority of the employees that work in those complexes are either full-time employees that work for other agencies doing others, other things, right? Or they're part-time employees that are brought on only when there's certain events, right? And so we, as a state, we don't pay into social security at all for any of our employees. In fact, the majority of government entities across the state don't pay into social security. Why? Because we pay into this beautiful pension plan, right? But those employees that are part-time seasonal or intermittent, sometimes are, don't qualify for our pension plan. So we have a program called a FICA alternative plan. Uh, it's a, it's a, uh, social security replacement plan that makes it, uh, be able to accommodate all those part-time seasonal intermittent employees. You guys have access to that. You just have to tell me if you want to turn it on, right? And we can make that happen. So, um, if you get into a situation where you have a good size amount of part-time employees, we can kind of look down that road, saves the county a ton of money and paying, you know, paying into social security. Sometimes these folks don't, wouldn't reap any benefit from it, right? So it's a way for us to, you guys to help your, these employees reap the most benefit from those contributions that, uh, they would be, you would normally be paying into social security. They actually get benefit from it, right?
Is there an age limit on that? Like if we had a sixteen year old like that, there's not?
Not at all. Yeah, that's great. So, uh, we can have somebody actually receiving social security, right? And receiving a pension or maybe a, you know, retired from a mine, for example, right? Um, and they just want to do something part-time. Maybe it's coming down and working a, a vendor booth at, at one of your events, at your, your event center. Or, um, we have a lot of folks over at Lawler Events that I'll use as an example, right? Um, or livestock events centers, even a better example, right? When the Reno Romeo comes into town, they actually create kind of a, a vendor. Uh, they utilize, uh, a company called Aramark, right? That, that actually provides all the food vendors, uh, and then they hire part-time employees that actually are funneled through the, the livestock event center. They actually hire them through the livestock event. So they're the ones who are providing the staff. All they're utilizing the contractor for is providing all the food and they're the ones who, you know, take the money and serve the food and all that stuff. And they are part of our FICA alternative plan, saves the county a ton of money, ton of money. So, yeah, something to consider. Okay?
I have a couple of questions. So employee, their spouse is not a county employee, can they participate?
It cannot. Okay. Yeah, you have to, the only way to participate in any, uh, employer sponsored plan is through salary deduction, right? So.
Um, and then if somebody wanted to roll over an existing Roth IRA, simple IRA, investment accounts, can they do so? And then are you still, go ahead, at the limit of the max that you can do it? Or can you do, say if you worked for the county for five years, you want to take advantage, roll over five years worth?
Perfect. Yeah. So it's a great question. Um, the answer to that is yes, 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 and yes, right? So, um, we actually allow any pre-tax plan to be rolled over into our plan. So IRAs, uh, simple IRAs, uh, SEP IRAs, uh, 401K plans, uh, 403Bs or other four fifty seven B plans, right? What we don't allow is Roth money to be moved over into our plan. And that's not our rule, that's an IRS guideline. They just haven't gotten to the point where they allow the portability of that into anything other than another Roth IRA. So, uh, keep that in mind. Um, but yeah, 401K plans. In fact, most people, when they join the plan, if they have other money in other plans, they've, would usually figure out real real fast. They'd much rather transfer it into deferred comp because then you pick up our pricing and our interest guarantees on that money as well.
And there's no limit on it. Say somebody had a million dollar 401K, they could roll that over into.
Yeah, that doesn't go against your, your deferral limit for that year of your salary. Okay. So. Yeah, good. Say it again.
Yeah, that's my, that's one of my questions. What is the fee structure?
Yeah. So it's great. I appreciate you guys asking that too. Um, so you can have a deferred comp plan in our program for measly ten dollars and twenty five cents a quarter, forty one dollars a year. That's going to go actually down January one. Uh, so we're going to go about a year or a year and a half maybe just to see what that does to our revenue coming in. And then we suspect that we may consider dropping that even lower.
So if somebody wanted to roll over that 401K, you're not going to charge them a one percent rollover fee, nothing like that. It's just that forty one dollar a year.
We don't do that. We don't pay commissions. We don't pay commissions and we don't pay fees outside of what's contractual contractual fees we have with Voya. So for example, husband and wife get divorced. Port orders that part of one of the two or both, their pension plans or their or their 401K plans are to go to the other spouse, right? Usually there's what's called a quadro, a qualified domestic relations order that's entered into, usually created by an attorney, right? And that that is given to us. We do charge a fee to implement that because it does cost us money, right? And we're just trying to recoup what it costs us. I think it's 450, $450 fee for a situation like that. If if and when we get to the point where we're still working towards getting you guys a loan provision, allowing your employees to be able to take a one-time loan out on their deferred comp during the career phase of their life, we're we're working on that. That'll happen later on. So when we roll that out, we'll develop a communication plan to help everybody understand that. And when that happens, we will, there's usually a loan fee when we originate that of 100 bucks. That usually just comes right out of their accounts. They don't have to like write a check or anything like that. It's pretty, pretty easy to manage. And then cool thing about the loan feature is they take, we allow them to take up to 50% or $50,000 of their balance in a in a loan, regardless of what the reason is. And they have up to five years to pay that back. So it's amortized over a five-year period, unless it's for primary residents and they can prove that. Then we will allow for a more extended time period to be amortized over. But most of the loans we do are about five-year amortization. They not only pay the principal payment back into their account, but all the interest goes back in their account as well, which is beautiful, right? And so it's a way for us to be able to help people during the career phase of their life as well. One other provision I just will add real quick is we're really proud of, and I'm the one that cheerleading this personally on the congressional level. Catherine Cortez Masto helped me with it and Mark Amade as well, helped me cheerlead it. And it is for us to allow for a one-time distribution of 5,000, up to $5,000 for any qualified birth or adoption that an employee might have to help them offset the cost of what it costs to start a family, right? And so I'm pretty proud of that. We're the first plan in the country. I I found out earlier to implement that, which was pretty cool. And Voya Financial was one of the first record keepers to be able to have that available to their, all their other, all their other clients that they that they help out, so.
And you guys will be around after the meeting?
Okay.
Do you want to just explain kind of what you just said?
So I do have them heading up. I was going to ask you if you wanted to do lunch before you went back there. I do have a handful of employees that are going to actually meet with you. I'm putting them in the back meeting room behind the recorder's office. So anybody that has questions can go back there.
Okay, good. So so we're at 12. Do you guys want to work through to lunch? Work through lunch, get through this? Is everybody good with that? We're just going to keep on working it?
Yeah, and we can be available pretty much all day. So John's going to stay here all day for sure for all of you guys. Well, why don't we, why don't we go back there? We can see where it's at and then we'll leave John. We'll bring you back a sandwich or throw you some bird seed or something. And and then we'll probably maybe go get a bite. And then you said you wanted to send us to somewhere else, right?
Yeah, I'm going to take you back to him.
Okay, cool. No, to like retirement?
Yeah, I do have a couple of other offices, county offices that would like.
Yeah, so we can, Bishop and I can go over and do that. And then you guys can all speak with John over here. I'll stick around for a little bit, just to, yeah. Any any recommendations for lunch? Please let us know. Don't say Portisubs, although their sandwiches were pretty good. I had one.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to 1.6. For information only, update from Brian Vazoni. Hopefully I pronounced that correct regarding the Greenlink North Transmission Project and updates and the updates of the 2012 Western Soldier Plan.
Pam, for the record, Brian sent me an email and he said he could be back at 1:00. They had to leave, so they're not on the phone anymore.
So he can be back at 1:00?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. We'll just, we'll just jump this one.
Okay. And then actually, Shelby and my presentation would be better to follow his, but we could do it ahead too.
No, we'll jump, we'll jump it. We'll come back to it when we're all here. So we'll jump to, thank you, Pam. We'll jump to 1.7 for discussion of possible action to adopt Resolution 2024-09, a resolution establishing a nine-month moratorium on renewable energy generation facilities. After Greenlink? Okay, that was my question. So we're gonna, we're going to come back to that one. So that one. Okay, so we'll go to 1.9 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the Lander County Emergency Operations Plan, letter of promulgation. All right, does the commission have any questions on this? Okay, public have any questions or comments on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Okay, I motion that we approve the Lander County Emergency Operations Plan, letter of promulgation.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, okay. We'll move to 1.10 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove purchasing a state of Iowa Gemma flag raising in bronze, 10-foot soldier and a 30-foot flag pole in an amount not to exceed $198,000 and $198,330. Okay.
How many soldiers is there going to be?
This is statute. I think there's, is there three?
I don't know. There should be a picture attached there in your backup.
Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah, I know there's like four. Okay. And where are you going to put it?
That would be right out front here in where we did the improvements to the landscaping between the sheriff's office and potentially the new fire hall.
Okay.
So commission, have any questions, comments on it? I'm personally in favor of it. I think it's awesome. I mean, it's who we are as a nation and a country. And I think it goes right in hands of beautifying our county and speaking to who we are. Those would be my comments on it. Commission, right? Does public have any questions or comments on it?
Sure, so everybody's where we did reach out to multiple builders and they were all the way from a million dollars down to this.
That's a really good price.
Yes.
All right, well, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the purchasing of a statue of Uwajima flag raising in bronze, 10-foot soldiers and a 30-foot flag pole in an amount not to exceed $198,333.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, we'll move into item. Let me see here, let's do this. How many people do we have here for 1.16? We can jump to that. Looks like we might have a few. So we're just going to go ahead and jump to 1.16 for discussion, consideration and possible action related to the vacancy of the seat held by Kathleen Ancho on the Lander County Board of Commissioners, a declaration that the Office of County Commissioner, District 5, is vacant, a request to the county clerk to certify the fact of the vacancy to the Secretary of State, a discussion regarding the process to fill the vacancy and the qualifications necessary to be appointed to the office and to authorize the county manager to write a letter to the governor to initiate the process for the appointment of a qualified person to fill the vacant office until January 3, 2027. All right, Bert, you want to lead on this?
Sure, you bet. We've, we've been through this process once before. We will follow the same process, obviously. Fisher Homing can kind of speak to that as well. The the governor's office, once this seat is declared vacant, they can start taking applications and then it is up to them to can do a point as they see fit. We don't really have any say in that process, but we can reach out and let them know the kind of urgency to get the seat filled. I know that when we did that last time, that there was actually taken pretty quickly. So that's why the the letter to the governor's office from me was added to this agenda.
Whoever they do, they do a background check on you?
Okay.
And letters of support from your community or different entities does help a lot.
Okay.
They take all that into consideration.
If you go to the governor's website, for anybody who's interested in putting in for it, you go to the governor's website, it says boards on the on the left-hand side, click on boards, go down a couple tabs and it will say appointments. You click on that, it opens up, opens up the application process. And right there, you can fill out that whole application process and submit to the governor. There is one spot in there that does require a I think the other word here, notary, to notarize a signed form. That form, if you're looking for it, it is right there in the very first lines on that application. You click on that, it opens up the form, you can print it off, sign it in front of a notary, and you have to send that back to the governor's office. So that's kind of the the steps and process. Once this board declares its vacancy, if anybody's interested in getting online and applying for it.
And they ask for a resume.
Yep, that and that resume is in in part of that that process.
Yeah.
Okay. Commission, have any questions, comments on it? Public have any questions or comments on the item? Okay, so I will hear a motion on this.
Motion to take action related to the vacancy of the seat held by Kathleen Ancho of the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Do I read the whole thing?
Basically, we're just declaring this, the whole motion declaring a vacant and to go through the process of.
Yeah.
Okay.
As per the item presented.
As per item.
As per the item presented.
So we have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will go back to. Yes, 1.1, thank you, Bill. 1.11 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove Resolution Number 2024-10, a resolution supporting Utah's attempt to have the Supreme Court of the United States hear Utah's challenges to ownership of the public lands currently administered by the US Bureau of Land Management in that state.
Okay, you have the resolution in your packet along with the proposed brief that they put in. At this point, they've already put it in. Several other counties and other political subdivisions have joined. I don't, I think I have the list there. And the only thing I would say is I didn't fill in things because I was hoping to hear back in regards to the next item in regards to, you know, hiring somebody. And they have not been able to get back to me regarding costs or what they're doing. I guess I'm getting a little bit ahead, but it it sort of explains where we're at because at the bottom of the resolution, it talks about whether or not you want to contribute something to the American Lands Councils in terms of hiring somebody to represent.
Right, do we have, you said there's a list? Did you say there was other counties in the state of Nevada?
Yeah, there is.
I don't see that list.
Hang on, maybe it didn't make it in.
I saw several states. I know the state of Wyoming is supporting it strongly.
And Idaho is going to do its own.
And we got Idaho, New Mexico, parts of Arizona.
I see the states are there, are there current.
But there were several counties, one of the lists. Sorry if it didn't make it in.
Any of our neighbors?
I didn't notice any. I was noticing mostly counties in Utah and Idaho.
And then how did this come to come on the agenda? Did somebody reach out to you, Bill, your office to? I mean.
Well, I've been following it. I couldn't tell you whether I.
Well, that's fine. You've been following it, so. So should I open up 1.17 concurrently with it? Or no, sorry, 1.1, which one was it? There was one following or no?
1, 2. You you can. What I was going to suggest, though, is no action on 1, 2. Because. Yeah, go ahead and open it up and we'll just go.
Which one is it, guys? 1.1?
Yeah, 1.11 and 1.12.
Yes, sorry. So we'll open up concurrently 1.12 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove designating and or hiring council to prepare in a mechas brief in support of Utah's effort to get the Supreme Court of the United States, SCOTUS, to take up Utah's challenge to ownership of the public lands. So basically, this is just kind of a, it's a paragraph, right? From from federal controlling to basically the state controlling public lands, right?
Correct. But the current challenge is limited. They, Utah is doing it for Utah, obviously, because they can only represent themselves.
Right.
But they're also limited to challenging just the BLM. They left off Forest Service, national parks and everything else. They, that was a tactical decision by them, but the precedent, if it goes through, is going to probably be across the board, or at least that's the argument. I can't see any way, if they win it, they're going to win it for everybody, all of the 11 western states and well, everybody else as well. There is some public lands of this sort, even in places like Michigan. That is the national forests and so on. So it would definitely be a landmark case.
So let me ask you this, is it entirely up to SCOTUS? Or with, you know, being that we have a new new people taking over in the federal government here after the first year, could that potentially change?
That could potentially change. I guess that'd bring up some of the political stuff that's going on. My understanding is if we had, say, Ted Cruz in as president, I know we would be in good shape because I've talked to him personally on the issue years ago, but he's in agreement. Texas has its public lands and he's in agreement that the rest of the western states should have theirs for the same reasons. So I know he would be supportive, but this is not something. My recollection from his first campaign, I have not followed him in this one. I don't think it's been an issue. But in his first campaign, some, Trump was approached and he didn't do anything in that first term, as we all know. But he felt, why should we give up something that we have? You know, he's always a guy who's doing trading and he wasn't quite so open to that. But theoretically, you are correct. If you had an attorney general, well, let's just play advocate there. If you had an attorney general that wanted to roll over and and play dead and simply say, you know what, they're right, we just as soon lose this case and we're not going to put up, you know, a fight or beyond just noting that we're here and that it's belonged to the federal government all these years. They could do that. I don't think that's likely. The other thing that is somewhat likely is while this is pending, depending on how it's going, negotiations could be made to drop the case in exchange for trading at least some of the land. You know, something along those lines. I think that's unlikely. I think basically it's going to be straight up or down and it's just going to be a fight. That's my personal take, but I could be completely wrong.
Right. I I mean, I'm of the opinion that since it is a new, we'll have a new team taken over, it's first of the year, it's federal government. I I would say my personal thing is to make a decision on this and decide something. I I think it'd be a little bit premature is my opinion. I I think we wait to have this new team in place and and maybe address it.
Okay, well, the problem we have right now, and that's what this is about. They are already moving forward. They filed it before, you know, the election. And they're moving forward with it. The case is already in front of the Supreme Court of the United States. They, this is to keep it either there in front of of the Supreme Court. There's an issue, initial issue as to whether the Supreme Court will hear it immediately or whether it has to go through US District Court and Court of Appeals and then on up. And they're attempting, because there is a provision in the Constitution, when a state sues the United States, the Supreme Court of the United States has what they call original jurisdiction. And original jurisdiction, the way to understand that is whatever court takes it. For example, locally, if you have a misdemeanor, the original jurisdiction is in the justice court. If you have a felony. If you have a felony, the original jurisdiction is in the District Court.
Didn't this, didn't something happen back in the, was it the 80s or something where Nye challenged BLM or?
Yeah, USV Nye County, that was through the U.S. District Court. We joined when we had Patty Caporetta as our DA. That is Wheelander County. I separately also joined in an amicus, but as we put in our own amicus brief, both counties did. And that got settled basically, Nye County. I mean, they had an adverse ruling and rather than keep going, they they accepted some compromises that they got and that was the end of it. So that didn't go anywhere, that's kind of what is feared. This is different in that it is a state of the United States.
Right.
Right now, it's in front of the Supreme Court. The issue on the immediate brief is whether or not the Supreme Court can take it up. One of the problems with waiting is that we have never had a Supreme Court, in my opinion, that is more likely to hear the issue in the last 150 years. The last time you had a Supreme Court that was paying attention to originalist thinking, that is looking at the Constitution and what it actually says and not caring how many cases there were, you know, or how much time has gone by, like this court does. You haven't had that in about 150 years, since frankly before the Civil War. They just haven't done it. A lot of the cases that you cited are from pre-Civil War. And they're getting back to original documents and that kind of research. I would I think it's better to get in on the ground floor of this thing and show our support. It needs, the Supreme Court needs to see that this is something that affects other states, not just Utah.
Right.
So that's why I would urge you to support this.
Yeah.
I am not going to urge you to pick anybody to represent or put money in it yet.
No, exactly, we're tracking Bill, I went into name, moving on here, I think, I get the point. So basically, I think we first off have to agree as a commission, do we accept the resolution that we're interested in?
Just don't fill in that part about how much money or anything. I left that, that's why I didn't finish it up because I didn't, I wasn't sure if we would be doing that.
Right, so basically, just in support, showing our support of the, of the issue at hand, and then 1.2 probably won't frail it, I mean, or some other time. Yeah, exactly. No action. Table it or no action. So does the commission have any questions on the resolution itself on 1.11? Does the public have any questions or comments on it? Yes, sir. Afternoon, David.
I've got a question, if this happens, you lose all your, the public can lose tax money?
That's a good question.
So also, if that happens, the only way you can get, the state can get money back is by selling off the land. If it's sold off the land, you have the same thing you have in Texas. A bunch of public land that you're only accessible either very rich or unknown someone personally.
That's a good perspective. Good question, yeah, that's a.
As to, as to pill, no, you would not get pill, but what you get instead is all of the fees. Right now, your BLM grazing fees and so forth go to the federal government, they would no longer go to the federal government. I wish I could tell you for sure, like what used to be able to tell you for sure what would happen because we have a statute in place. All right, but unfortunately, the legislature decided to repeal it, I forget whether it was 19 or 21, but one of those legislatures repealed it. That is the Sagebrush Rebellion statutes. So now we don't have anything in place. But my assumption is they would put those back in place if they found themselves suddenly owning the public lands. And we would get all of those fees. Well, those fees are more than pill, so we would actually do better.
Well, I just, I like the perspective though because it's basically the federal government are the stewards of the lands currently. So, so they become the state and then I would say that, does the state control or does it cycle down and then the actual counties control? But who's to stop them for putting them up to sale and then you have some elitist that's buying up this land? And we're in the same position, probably a worse position than we currently are. I mean, that, that's a, that's a, I'm glad you brought that up, David, because it's a very, that is a very real scenario that could possibly happen. I mean, it's like, I mean, we, I mean, people that hunt, we know, I mean, it's like, you look around and it's like a lot of these public lands that used to be free to hunt, now they're controlled by private ownership. You can't go in there, you can't hunt it, you can't enjoy it. And that's a very real possibility, so that is, that's definitely the other side of it.
Well, I don't know what to tell you on that one.
No, I'm not asking you to tell me anything, that's, it's my opinion.
It's possible, I think it's unlikely that you would see that kind of massive.
Yes, sir.
Another example of that happening is we had the railroads devoid themselves of their land and it became up for sale. And we've seen right in this community, all of Indian Creek, you can't hunt in it anymore because it was railroad land that was sold and it's not available for hunting. And there's other canyons around that there's been properties blocked and it's closed off those areas for hunting. And that will continue. And if you have, and this is only every other section for 20 miles up from the railroad. If you take the whole state, the whole state is up for grabs. And those people with the big money will be in here to buy it and they will close it off. You go to Texas, you go to Colorado and you'll find big blocks of public land that used to be blocked off and is inaccessible to the public.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, just so people understand, it doesn't necessarily be.
You're all hunting, you're recreation camping, all of that.
Yep, that's right. And that's, it doesn't necessarily mean that it'll be an American corporation that buys those public lands. It could be foreign interests, right? So it's just, it's definitely, again, this is my opinion and it's just, I know we have our, our workability issues with the, you know, BLM and stuff, but it's just, I don't know, it's just, it's definitely something to consider. Me personally, I don't know if I'm ready to jump on the bandwagon and support it without actually looking into it some more. And again, that's my opinion, that's my belief, but so I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Hey, this is Carrie Lindsay with UNR online, could I make a quick comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Just the one thing to consider with this is, you know, in the work that I do, I have to get a lot of permitting through BLM. So are the state and county ready to take that over? That's another thing to consider because with that land comes the management of it. And all the permitting processes and everything that BLM currently does, which I know a lot of us deal with headaches with, but they do it. So just something else to consider.
Okay, thank you.
My assumption would be that the state would go back to those statutes that it repealed. The land would, under ordinary law, since it belongs to the state, you'd see it being administered by NDOT and so on. The same as some of our lands are now under, under, that is, a few, there aren't very many, but there are some state public lands. And that's true of other states, even of Texas, they do have still regular public lands like what we're accustomed to here and they pay grazing fees and things like that. But it would be up to individual states, you can't control that, but we can't control the federal government. Look, look at what's about to happen compared to what has been happening, at least what we anticipate is going to happen in the Trump administration versus the Biden administration. All I have to do is look at it across the board and you can see that there, there can be wild swings. And we know that from the state. I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but like, I can't imagine Governor Lombardo doing the COVID stuff that the previous governor did. But on all sorts of issues, it can change. And there's just no dealing with it. But if you have it under your own state's control, that would mean for the county having an easier time of things. Because you don't have to go to Washington, you can go just to Carson City.
We think, and it's all, it's all depending who's playing for that team for the state at that time. But the point is, it's one bad deal and we know how money corrupts and how it changes opinions and views and it's like, all it takes is one wrong time and you've lost your, you've lost your public lands. I see that as a potential. And to say, it's not likely this or that, me personally, I'm not comfortable with that at this stage in the game. So I mean, it's just, is there any other public comment or questions on it? Yes, ma'am.
I'm hearing Tim for the record, I couldn't find the statistic in the past and maybe somebody knows it offhand or we can look it up later, but at one time, the state of Nevada had a lot more public land, it was state land, and it was almost all sold off. So that's, show me the past to show you the future is something to consider.
Interesting, yeah, so, does the commission have any other questions on it?
Only other thing I want to bring up, we have a problem currently with the wild horses in burrows. If they don't have the public lands, they lose their Wild Horse in Burrow Act. Okay, because as a practical matter, they're not their horses in burrows. It's not their land, it's not their horses in burrows, they're done. Okay, so all of the problems we're having with the wild horses eating too much would be over almost immediately.
Oh, and I did think of that and it's like, if it's dealing with the wild horse issue or dealing with whether or not we have public lands, I know which one I would choose, so that's.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Just pointing that out.
Yes, thank you, Bill.
In your wild horse, that's a state issue that the people of the state has caused this problem. And the government has been trying to reduce the horses. But they can't because of the lawsuits, the people in the state and the state would support them. So if the state had control of it, I think we'll see a lot more wild horses. The other issue might be considered is fire suppression. They've spent a lot of money to fight a fire, we do not have that kind of money in the county or the state to spend.
That's another, yeah. Anyway, I think I've heard enough on it, so I'm going to call, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Do we want it table for later or just dissolve it?
It's, it's whatever this board wants to entertain.
I think we should table it so we can get more information on it.
Okay. How do you feel about that, Mike?
We could bring it back, right?
Yeah, we can always bring it back.
I'll make a motion to disapprove supporting resolution number 2024-10.
Okay.
A resolution supporting Utah's attempt to have Supreme Court of the United States hear the Utah's challenge of two ownership of the public lands currently administered by the U.S. Bureau of Land Management in the state.
Okay, so we have a motion to disapprove, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. We'll move into 1.12, which I think, you guys want to even take up the thing or we'll just?
Can I ask for direction in terms of, I'm not understanding on 1.1?
I know, my motion is to not support it.
Yeah, not to support it, but do you want it brought back at some point?
Well, maybe if something changes, I mean, you're the, you're the legal office, if you see there's something that may have changed that would basically put our concerns at ease, then by all means, you bring it back to the commission. I mean, we're not, I'm not telling you to stop your pursuit or what you feel is important, but as far as you know, taking both sides, yours and the public's concern on it, I think we've made a decision and that's where it's at today. But to say that it's dead forever, no, that's not the case.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
If some of these questions have answers to them and it's in the benefit of the people, we'll know what, what happens.
Okay.
So basically, item two, which is already read in, or item 1.12, it's already read in the record. Do we want to approve, disapprove, not take action, what do you guys want to do on that?
A motion to disapprove.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to disapprove, second as well, all in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we'll move to 1.13 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the lease agreement between Lander County, a political subdivision of the state of Nevada here and after referred to as Lander County, and the Persian County Women, Infants and Children here and after referred to as PCWIC in an amount not to exceed $12 per year for a portion of the building located at the corner of South Mountain Street and West Fourth Street in Battle Mountain. Okay, does the commission have any questions on this?
Who's responsible for the utilities, us or them?
This is just our renewal contract with them and I believe they split utilities with, who's in them now have.
Okay, I motion, we approve it.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. We'll move to 1.14, or sorry, yes, 1.14 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the Austin Train Park art in an amount of $14,400 for each piece of metal art. And the Board of County Commissioners to decide how many they would like. So, I've got a picture of this thing here.
Right.
And then the actual, so the actual size, so is this, I can't tell from the picture, is this something like a sheet of metal and then it's like, it's c and c out?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
And the size again was like, it was like nine foot, is that right?
Six foot high, 19 foot long.
So it's 19 foot long, okay. Yeah.
And then it's supported on the back with box tubing and it has, would have legs that come down at an angle to support it. And then that would be set in concrete or attached to concrete.
Yeah.
So that it wouldn't move.
Pretty cool.
And fall on some little darlin'.
Okay, the commission have any questions or comments on it? Does the public have any questions or comments on it? Okay. Does the, does the public have a copy of this, what it would actually look like? Oh, you did, okay. All right.
It's for Austin, Bill, do I have to abstain or?
No.
I'm just double checking, I don't want to get us in trouble.
All right, so I'll hear a motion.
I motion that we approve the Austin Train Park art at the amount of $14,400 for each piece of metal art. At this stage of the game, we only have one, okay, so for the piece. Okay, and then we'll go for one right now and then.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the one in an amount of $14,400. Second, okay, motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 1.15 for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove purchasing a welcome to Austin, Nevada. Signed with the approval from NDOT. Options to choose include, one, a six foot by 10 foot non-limited rusty steel sign on post in an amount not to exceed 9,000. Two, an eight by 14 foot in an amount not to exceed 16,800. And three, an 11 foot by 20 foot in an amount not to exceed 33,000.
We're looking at two of them, right Sean, one for each into town? Yeah. Yeah, the county, everybody in town liked the little ore cart one. I can send you a picture of it.
Yes, right there. So how big is that sign right there? I mean, in this mockup? Is that like a, looks to me about like a six by 10 maybe?
I believe so, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think if you get it too big, it just might be too, you know, too much.
Right, yeah, I agree with that. And then on the one into town by the Chevron, we're kind of limited for size. I don't know if you want to plan on putting it down lower or because NDOT owns that property and then we own the property and then Champy Douglas owns the property. So the county doesn't own.
Welcome to Austin.
Yeah. But I'm easy, I'd agree to it, so. On the upper end, the water department owns that property up there.
So basically, I guess, are you guys in agreement with maybe the six foot by 10 foot?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll hear a motion and if there's no more discussion, is there any public comment or questions on it?
No public comment, but it's not.
Andrew Warwood for the record. So it's not necessarily about this 1.15 specifically, but I just want to make, as far as my public comment goes, that as I've been totaling these numbers for artwork and things were approaching like $245,000 within this meeting that we're voting to spend on artwork and there's been a lot of discussion on benefit and value added on other projects that we're building, so I this is my comment, we're at, we're at about $245,000 total. And I do agree that Austin needs these signs there, but just to make everyone aware.
Okay, thank you.
So just, just for the public, you know, this is out of the 4.5 million, we set aside for community beautification projects and that's what we're.
We set aside for, uh, community beautification projects, and that's what we're, that's what we're funding. That is out of.
Yeah, thank you, Bert. Okay, so do we have a motion for 1.15?
Motion to approve purchasing a welcome to Austin, Nevada sign. He's at the six by 10.
Okay.
Is the one you like?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
Do you guys want that for both ends of time?
Yeah.
And within amount not to exceed, so is that $9,000 per sign, correct?
Yeah, so it'd be $18,000.
You want to put that in your motion?
Okay, about to exceed, uh, for two signs, $18,000.
Okay, so is there a second?
I second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 One thing I do want to make the commission and the community of Austin aware of is we do have to wait on the NDOT approvals.
Right.
So sometimes that, you know, we aren't dragging our feet, we're, we're waiting on approvals so we can put them up.
Right.
Right.
All right, we'll move to 1.17 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove resolution 2024-11 directing Lander County assessor to prepare and publish the 2025-26 assessment rule.
Is there any?
Any questions, guys?
Sean's gonna go get her.
We'll be right here.
Okay. I also think it'd be cool to have signs on the ends of Battle Mountain, too, down the line.
Hey, Laura. So we have, it's this time to approve the, the resolution directing you to prepare and publish the 2025-26 assessment rule.
Yep, it's that time of year again.
Yep. So, does the commission have any questions or, um, comments for Laura?
Hmm.
Okay, does the public have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number 2024-11 directing Lander County assessor to prepare and publish the 25-26 assessment rule.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Laura.
And then, uh, you'll sign, and then there's, looks like we'll have it recorded.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We will sign it. Okay, so, thank you. 1.18 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the canvas of the vote for the November 5th, 2024 general election. Hey, Molly.
Hi.
So, the election turnout and everything was good, it looks like?
It was a very good turnout, yes.
I was impressed, 78%.
Yeah.
That's really good.
Okay, and so we did it, did we do a, an, an actual hand count?
Yes.
Okay, we did, good. Everything was right on track of what the machine said and paper. Okay. Okay, commission, have any question, comments? Public have any questions or comments on the issue? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the canvas of the vote for November 5th, 2024 general election.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 And then we'll get this signed.
Thank you.
All right, 1.2 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the updated disadvantaged business enterprise DBE, uh, program plan for Battle Mountain and Austin Airport, and authorize the chair to sign. All right, Dave?
Uh, good morning, well, good afternoon, Commissioner David Meyer, JB, for the record. Um, I just come bearing more paperwork for the FAA, that's what they workshop in. So, uh, this is the standard agree, or, uh, grant assurances to have this disadvantaged business, uh, enterprise program plan. We last approved this in 2021. There's been some language updates, particularly for, uh, uh, design build projects, just because that wasn't included previously. We don't do many design builds, it's typically a commercial service airport level, uh, effort. Otherwise, the, uh, general updates fall under, uh, changing some showers to some mays, uh, codifying some of the, um, reporting, and, um, deliberation and things like that in there. So, it's all stuff that's been in place for a while, they just want to see more of it in the program plan, so that you're actively participating in it instead of passively.
Gotcha. Um, and then I see there's like, some conditions or things that go along with that. And then, uh, I see, Bert, they put you in charge of that, is that something that we have, like legal that helps us with to make sure, did you, if you read this here?
Yeah, I know Bill reviews all this as well.
Perfect, all right.
So there's two officials for your DBE program plan. The first is your liaison officer, and that's typically your administrator, so in this case it would be Bert.
Right.
And then there's a reconsideration officer. So if for some reason we did have a DBE dispute, and the contractor disagreed with Bert's initial ruling, they would take it to the reconsideration officer. Um, those are highlighted, this is Bert or Bill's last chance to try to pawn that off on someone else, but they seem ready to step up to the plate, so.
Okay.
I mean, you know, the, the choice is, don't do it. It's not like there's somebody in the federal government we can negotiate it with.
Yeah, but you don't do it, then it takes us off the table for better grant money.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, that's how I often say.
It's one of those, yeah, those strings, you know, but it's like.
And I will say for the, for the disadvantaged program, or the DBE for our airport projects, they are actually race neutral goals, meaning they're not contractual obligations. Um, for the highway side, they actually have race conscious goals, which they do become a contractual obligation to fulfill them. The only reason that the airports don't is they weren't included in the state's disparity study, um, which is required to generate a race conscious goal. So, as of now, this just remains, um, something supported by the sponsor rather than something contractually obligated, which is where I'd like it to stay for a while.
Yeah. Um, the commission have any questions, comments on it? Well, the public? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the updated disadvantaged business enterprises DBE program plan for Battle Mountain and Austin Airports, authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, for discussion and possible action, 1.21, thanks, David. Um, to approve, disapprove the lease agreement between Lander County and the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public and Behavioral Health Rural Clinics, located at E25 North Second Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820, in an amount of $1,955.80. Didn't we just do this?
It's another one, so this is just, uh, our standard renewal.
Okay. So nothing's changed?
Um, I do believe they increased the cost that they pay us.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions? Public, any questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the lease agreement between Lander County and the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Behavioral Health Rural Clinics, located at 25 North Second Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820, in the amount of nine, $1,955.80 per month.
Okay, we have a motion, second, and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, 1.22 for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, moving the Lander County Commissioners meeting January 9th, 2025 to January 6th, 2025, to be in compliance with NRS 244.0853.
So I attach the NRS to your backup, and NRS in the odd number of years, since we have to have the first meeting on the first Monday, so you can technically keep your January 9th meeting, or we can move it to the 6th.
So we'll get our new people sworn in?
On Monday, this day.
Okay. All right, so, all right, are, is there any questions? Public have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve moving the Lander County Commission meeting January 9th, 2025 to January 6th, 2025, to be in compliance with NRS 244.0853.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll go into 2.1, correspondence, reports, future addenda items.
Oh, I believe we have a couple items that we tabled, we need to go back to, I think.
Oh, did we?
Pam was.
Oh, yes, 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 sorry, Greenlink.
We're waiting for 1 o'clock for.
Yeah.
The signing is on.
Oh, okay.
But while you have, if, if you open that, I mean, you can come back to it, right? But while we have this, something to take care of real quick. We have the parade of lights, um, set for December 7th. There's not another meeting between now and then. So would you prefer to have a, um, a special meeting to quickly approve it, or would you prefer to prove it after the fact? How do you want us to proceed?
We can ratify that.
Ratify it after?
Yeah.
So are we conducting business on something that's not agendized right now? Because I, I'm, I haven't just seen anything.
I'm asking about future meetings, how would you like?
Okay, there you go, thank you. Um, so, yeah, that's fine, just bring it back and ratify.
Because it's something you do every year, anyway.
Well, and we do have the, the sheriff's approval and NDOT's approval already.
Well, those are the big guys, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was just a misstep there in the process, and we'll be able to have it back in front of you guys, either in a special or at the next meeting of, if everybody could have that.
Yeah. Sounds good, thanks, Bill. And we have our, uh, other person on the line? Okay, so do we want to read, should we read these all in, or just dress one at a time?
I would leave that to, to Ms. Pam, how she would like to, to tackle that.
I couldn't hear you.
She's wondering if you'd like to open one item at a time, or if you'd like to open them all?
Oh, how about one item at a time, because there's two actions worth like to ask you, and then this is a presentation from BLM to get a startage.
Okay, so we'll open 1.6 for information only, update from Brian Bozoni, hopefully I said that correct, regarding the Greenlink North Transmission Project and the updates to the 2012 Western Solar Plan.
Let me see if I have all my technology working correctly on my end. I'm assuming, uh, it is working.
Well, we don't see anything here, we can hear you.
I see him.
Okay, all right. Hey, Brian.
And somebody is able to bring up the presentation, or was it intended that I needed to share it?
We were unaware that we were supposed to be bringing it up, I apologize.
We have a copy of it on our screen.
Yeah, you can hyperlink it, download it, and flip it.
One second, we're checking the difficulties here, Brian.
On 1.6, it should just be the Greenlink presentation, if you want to hit that. 1.6, you said? Yep. Oh, hold on. I'm gonna have to work it. All right, and then, let me go to video. Okay.
All right, they got it up, they're ready for you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board. Um, Pam Harrington had been coordinating with the Reno Office for Renewable Energy for the past two or so months to do an update for, um, your board regarding two topics. Slide number one just says what the two topics are, which is where the BLM is in its planning process regarding updates to the Western Solar Plan, which was originally approved in 2012, and where we are with the Greenlink North Transmission Project, which does cross through the southern third of Lander County. Slide number two does show who was intended to be here for today's meeting, but everybody else dropped. So, uh, you have a, you have a, uh, presenting group of one. Uh, my name, again, my name's Brian Bozoni, and I'm project manager here in Reno, Nevada. Slide number three, because I'm not seeing the slide, so that's why I'm just going to verbalize the numbers and make sure we're on the same slide together. Um, there are several national planning efforts that have been underway for, uh, more than a couple of years, um, that the Bureau of Land Management has been undertaking. You see in the lower part of the slide, there's something called Westwide Energy Corridors, and the BLM has been undertaking a review of those, which are essentially utility corridors across multi-states in the west. We have the updates to the 2012 Western Solar Plan, and we have the updates to the 2015 Greater Sagegrass Plan. As you may be aware, this week, the Greater Sagegrass Plan was released for, um, protest and, um, governor's consistency review. And so some of these national planning efforts, you know, they're in different stages. And, um, obviously, we'll have a turn at administration on January 21st, and the new administration will, of course, reevaluate where these in-progress planning efforts are, and whether or not they'll go forward, or whether they'll not be, whether they'll be modified, et cetera. Slide number four is a snapshot of Nevada and Lander County in black there. And a couple of things for you to be aware of is that we go through planning efforts, and they're supposed to be on intervals of about every 15 or so years. As you can see, part of Lander County is in the Oko District, and the Resource Management Plan that governs that's, that smaller area is from 1987. And then, uh, much more of Lander County, the bulk of Lander County, sits within the Battle Mountain District of the BLM. And as you can see, the Resource Management Plan that governs the public lands in that area is from 1986. So sadly, to convey it, uh, most of these land use plans are substantially out of date. And in more modern times, the last 10 or so years, most of the planning efforts have been done at the national level, and I just called out three of those planning efforts. So slide number five shows you where we were with the, um, solar plan update, that there was a protest period that ended on September 30th, that the BLM is reviewing the 162 or so protest submissions that were filed on that plan, and we do not expect a decision until the new administration comes on board. So there will not be any record decision issued, um, likely through the end of this administration. And of course, like any administration, it can choose to continue the efforts from the previous administration, withdraw those efforts, or modify those efforts. Now, what the, the solar plan essentially does, and we'll look at a couple maps for Lander County shortly, is it basically characterizes areas as either available for application for solar or areas that are closed to solar application. If we look at the next slide, when we talk about applications, this is the spectrum of the solar applications across the whole state divided by county. And as you can see, the vast majority of the solar applications that we have in the state of Nevada on BLM lands are in Clark and Nye Counties. But even when we have a pending application for solar, it does not necessarily mean that it is undergoing review under the National Environmental Policy Act. And you can see a significant, um, very few of the projects actually ever undergo National Environmental Policy Act review. And then you can see the last column there, of which counties actually have authorized solar projects on Bureau of Land Management lands. And you can see, of course, um, the dominant number there is Clark County. We have several solar projects that are currently out for public input, Copper Rays and Rough Hat in Nye County, Bonanza in Nye and Clark Counties, Dodge Flat Two over in Washoe County. And then recently, the Bureau of Land Management approved Lebra Solar, which is in Lyon and Mineral Counties. So going back to slide seven now, or turn to slide seven, this is what the map looks like for the updated solar plan if it were to be approved by the next administration. All of the areas in red are closed to solar development, the areas in green are open, and the areas in pink are conditionally open. And you can see the breakdown of the acres. It's about 30% of Lander County would be available for solar application. And you can see on the map where those areas are located. The next slide, number eight, shows you where the actual pending applications in Lander County are. There is one at the top of the county that's in Winnemucca District. You can kind of see that little cross ditty there. And then you can see the other four, um, Polygon South or adjacent to Highway 50. Now, pending applications does not mean that it's undergoing environmental review, nor does it mean that it's cleared the BLM Director's Office. So all of these projects are in variance areas, and all variance areas require approval by the BLM Director before they can be, uh, moved to the National Environmental Policy Act. before they can be moved to the National Environmental Policy Act stage. And I am not aware that any of these are going to be going, undergoing review or moving out of their current state, which is the state is their pending application. And I don't believe they're going to be moving out of that situation in the next calendar year. Not heard of the information that any of these are moving forward. So we currently don't have any solar projects under review in Lander County. And we have pending applications for solar projects in Lander County, of which I don't have any information that any of these are going to move forward. So we have to be very careful about what you hear in the media about thousands and thousands of acres being slated for solar development in Nevada. And again, yes, dominantly, it's in Clark and Nye County and sprinkled throughout the other counties in the state. But we're a bit like mining. There's a lot of speculation in mining, lots of unpatented mining claims, I think more than 400,000 across the whole state that have never turned into development. We're in a bit of a renewable energy bubble right now. And of course, that will be revisited by the new administration beginning January 21st, whether or not there'll continue to be emphasis on renewable energy. Even if the federal layer of this question about renewable energy were to go away and renewable energy were no longer to be an emphasis by the new administration. NV Energy and the other utilities are working under a Nevada revised statute requiring renewable energy portfolios be met. 30% by 2025, they've already exceeded that. I believe it's 50% by 2030. So even if the federal emphasis on solar were to go away under the new administration, there would still be an emphasis in play in this state because of state law requiring increased renewable energy use. And then, of course, down in Clark County, of course, Clark County sitting right next to California means there's going to be continuing pressure in Clark County for solar projects. So with that, that's my update on the solar plan, which at this state will be pending the outcome of what the new administration decides to do with the solar plan. But there are continuing upward pressures on renewable energy development, regardless of which way the new administration chooses to go, because we have this state and our adjacent California state have significant requirements for renewable energy portfolios as a part of their energy transmission mix. I'm going to pivot to the Green Lake Projects, but I, if we want to pause and see if there's any questions from the board regarding where we are with our national planning before I move into the Green Lake North Project, this might be a point, or if we want to do any questions at the end, I would be happy to do it either way.
Yeah, we'll just do questions at the end.
So slide number nine shows you.
Hold on, one second, Brian, what's up, Bert? Okay, let me open up another item here before we continue on. So that's going to be 1.18 for discussion possible action to approve this, approve the Green Lake North Transmission Line Financial DEIS comments and authorize chair design. That item? No, that's fine, crossing lines.
Yeah.
Alright, Brian, all yours.
Slide number nine shows you what NV Energy has called Green Lake Projects. There are two Green Lake Projects in Nevada, both sponsored by NV Energy. The one on the left, they're the orange line, Green Lake West, coming from North Las Vegas to the Reno metropolitan area. That align, that line was approved on September 9th. We had five federal agencies of jurisdiction and three or four Nevada state counties. And that line, we're looking at construction. They're going to start working on a substation in December. And then they'll be start working in the area in the Mercury vicinity, if you know where Mercury is located, kind of south of Creech Air Force Base. That'll be the first area of that 472-mile-long transmission line that will be constructed in early 2025. And they're expecting it to take about two and a half years to construct. The other Green Lake Project is the one that crosses through Lander County that goes between Ely and Yarrington. And we are currently in the middle of a 90-day comment period right now, and we'll talk about that shortly. We are hoping that we'll have that project approved in late summer of 2025. Now, slide number 10 explains NV Energy's need for both of these transmission lines. And Lee Simkins was on earlier, but it's not available. But I know his, his theme here, which is NV Energy has identified the need for both of these transmission lines for the following reasons. Energy redundancy, resiliency and reliability. They are having to move a lot more electrons from the south to the north because of all the growth in the Reno metropolitan area. And all their modeling and everything they do is that their current transmission system coming into Reno metropolitan area cannot meet the, the projected demands due to population growth. So there's several factors as to why more electrons are needed to come into the Reno metropolitan area. And of course, Las Vegas itself is also experiencing continuing experience growth. So in the case of redundancy and resiliency and reliability, NV Energy is not proposing to construct any renewable energy projects along the Green Lake North Project that would tie into Green Lake North. So where I showed you the map of those other pending solar applications, is it theoretical that they could eventually connect into the Green Lake North Project? Possibly. But what NV Energy has been telling us is that the Green Lake North Project will carry up to 4,000 megawatts of power between Ely and Yarrington. And they already have that 4,000 megawatts committed to. And that literally the line would not have the capacity to absorb any additional inputs. So they've explained it to us as redundancy resilient, resiliency and reliability, not renewables. There is renewables down in Southern Nevada, replacing natural gas plants with solar developments in Southern Nevada. But there hasn't been any of that indication up in the northern tier of Nevada. Slide number 11 shows the broad spectrum of interests and parties that we have had involved in this project over the past three years as cooperating agencies, which includes the northern tier Nevada counties, state agencies of wildlife interest. And of course, we have a spectrum of tribes that have been interacting with us, primarily the Duckwater Shoshone Tribe. Slide number 12 shows the meetings that we have now completed during this 90-day comment period, which started on September 10th. And this 90-day comment period ends on December 11th. So we're just under four weeks away from the end of the comment period for this project. Slide number 13, probably should have had this a little bit earlier. But this is what NV Energy originally proposed to us. This was their alignment that they brought to the table to the BLM and US Forest Service, starting back in July of 2020, a 235-mile-long transmission line that largely parallels US 50. Now, in their citing or what they call conflict analysis studies, these are the kind of layers the utility for transmission is going to go through. First, economics, which is the shortest distance between point A and point Z, which is mostly a straight line between the Robinson Summit Substation and the Fort Churchill Substation. The other layer of the conflict studies that they go through is because of the federal permitting requirements that kick in, is where can they limit or minimize impacts? And one of the ways utilities do this for transmission is by paralleling or co-locating their new line to existing lines. And there is already an existing 230 KV line that runs for approximately 198 miles that this transmission line will be co-located with. There's also, I didn't note on the slide, between Eureka and Ely itself, a 345 KV line. So there's dual co-location on the eastern quarter or so of this 235 miles. Now, when an application becomes applicant comes before the federal agency, that isn't, doesn't mean it's necessarily going to get 100% of what they've requested from us. And what we have done in slide number 14 is we have modified the alignment in a couple of small places that aren't going to show up on the map at the scale. But the other thing that we've done is we are designating a utility corridor that this alignment will be placed within. And this utility corridor matches up with other utility corridors that already exist. So on BLM lands, between the two substations, there was no utility corridor available for NV Energy to cite the transmission line in. But where that word Austin is and going through the national forest for that 10-mile piece, there is a Forest Service designated utility corridor. And then a bit further to the west, the color is showing is white there, that really is normally pink on our maps. That's the Dixie Valley Training Area in Churchill County. Well, where that hatched area disappears and it's just a blue line, that is a legislative utility court. So when Congress last December expanded the Dixie Valley Training Area as a part of the Fallon Naval Air Station expansion, Congress explicitly called out a legislative utility corridor. So all we're doing here between Robinson and Fort Churchill is connecting the dots from one point to the other with a utility corridor that this transmission line will be placed with. Slide number 15 just shows the broad spectrum and range of studies that we have been performing over the past two or so years, from visual analysis to checking out the status of the Greater Sage Grouse Lex, burrowing owls, pygmy rabbits, et cetera. Were all studied over the past two years through field inventories and help inform us for the environmental document that is currently available for your input. Slide number 16 shows a broad outline of what the environmental document looks like. We always have to do a no-action alternative, which is that there would be no project. Then we have the first alternative, which is what we call the proposed action. And then we have modified it in a few places and introduced that utility corridor. And that is what we're calling out as the preferred alternative. And then we have talked to the public multiple times about this project and the cooperators multiple times about this project. And they have presented us alternative ideas for this transmission between Robinson and Fort Churchill. Some of the ideas that were posed to us include things like, why don't you go up and around on Interstate 80 rather than following US Highway 50? We also have the suggestion, the last time we talked with the public earlier this year, why don't you entirely underground the whole transmission line? So we actually have 18 suggestions or recommendations that were made by the public, cooperating in agencies and otherwise for modifications to this project and/or the alignment. Now, most of these did not satisfy the criteria that we applied to alternatives and they were not carried forward. So we're not considering any further an alternative that would go up and over along I-80. We're also not considering an alternative that would underground the transmission line for 235 miles. First, that apparently has never been done. And secondly, the cost would go from about $600 million to $6.4 billion to underground the whole thing. And surprisingly, it would actually be more environmentally damaging than having the overhead transmission line. So we encourage everybody, the public and otherwise, as we've been doing through our meetings, slide number 17, look at the environmental impact statement. It's a very typical organization for an EIS. The focus generally comes to chapter two and chapter three. Chapter two is where we describe the proposed action, the preferred alternative and the other alternatives we considered, including undergrounding or I-80 and those sorts of scenarios. Chapter three is the existing conditions or what we call the affected environment. And then chapter three is also the consequences. Now, a big area of concern that we have heard from the public and cooperating agencies is relative to Greater Sage Grouse. Because this alignment will cross through, more than half of it will cross through Greater Sage Grouse habitats and be in proximity to Greater Sage Grouse Lex. The challenge with Greater Sage Grouse is not actually the transmission lines themselves or the roads associated with it. It's the fact that it creates perching opportunities for ravens. And then ravens take advantage of those perching opportunities to prey on sage grouse eggs and chicks. So we are requiring NV Energy to change the pole design and install anti-perching nesting devices on those poles. Slide number 18 shows you the suite of resources we've analyzed fully in the document, ranging from biological concerns and resources to Native American religious concerns and cultural resource concerns. And then we have a separate category on slide 19 of resources that we have still analyzed, but generally did not inform the choices that we had up this, up until this point in terms of the range of alternatives that we've constructed. Recreation, livestock grazing, wild horses don't really influence much where we cite transmission line. Whereas the location of cultural resources and wildlife resources has a greater preponderance to influence where we cite transmission. And so with that, question, slide number 20 is the end of the presentation with a question of, do you have any questions? As I've indicated, we have a comment period currently running until December 11th. Lander County previously provided us comments on the administrative draft of the document before it was released to the public. That is one of the enhanced review opportunities that cooperating agencies have. And we appreciate and look for further comments that Lander County may offer us by December 11th. And our estimated schedule for next year is to publish what we call a final document in April and then likely approval of the project by end of summer into next fall. So about, we're still about nine or 10 months out before this project would ultimately be approved by the Bureau of Land Management and the US Forest Service. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Alright, the commission have any questions?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Okay, so it looks like the solar plants, if they do go in, are going to be out there on the salt flats, like out in Smoky Valley and Edwards Creek Valley?
You're talking about south of 50 there, right?
Yeah, yeah. And then out in Smoky Valley, it looks like they're both going to be on salt flats if that goes through?
I, this is a Battle Mountain District that these projects are in, so I'm not directly involved in those. But I, what I'm doing is I'm showing you the GIS data that that office had available, so.
Okay, that just looked like that. Anyway, ORMAT has five substations run along Highway 50 between Austin and Fallon. You're not going to utilize any of those substations? You're going to build other substations right next to them?
So Robinson to the east end is an, there's going to be some modifications to Robinson on the east end. And on the west end, Fort Churchill is also being modified by NV Energy to accommodate Green Lake West and Green Lake North. And then there's going to be modifications to the Lander Substation.
Okay, but you're not going to build any others in between? It's just going to be those three substations?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. Lander being the one that's outside of Austin on 375?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because that one's been there a long time. Okay. And you're not going to tie any of the green energy that we already have going through there in with this? It's all going to be totally separate?
So what, what NV Energy has been conveying to us is first, of that 4,000 megawatts, it's largely already committed for essentially electrons coming from the south from the Las Vegas area. They already have about 30, 3,000 to 3,500 meg, 1,000 megawatts of electrons already committed to the Green Lake System from, originating from the Las Vegas area for what they're doing down there.
Link system originating from the Las Vegas area for what they're doing down there and altering their portfolio from natural gas around Harry Allen to renewables around Henry, Harry Allen. And then, so any applicants in the northern tier of Nevada on Bureau of Land Management lands that would want to tie into Green Lake North would have to engage them directly. And what Lee said in our most recent meeting is their infrastructure could not currently accommodate anybody connecting into the Green Link system. So there would be a significant financial investment on the part of anybody actually tying into this. And they don't have anybody pending currently talking with them with interest in connecting into this line. They already have it largely committed to, based on what they're bringing up along 93, along 93, they have a 525 system already, and that's where most of the power is coming in from, and that is what would load this transmission line. And there would be challenges and layers of things that parties would have to go through in order for anybody to ever connect into this transmission line.
So we're going to have this big old ugly power line and then the other power lines?
The current line along this alignment is from the 1970s. They are the wood pole structure. These will be steel pole structures. That's true.
Okay.
Any other questions? Does the public have any questions or comments on it? Okay. So we'll, so we have 1.18 open, but we'll open 1.7 now. That, okay. So we'll go on to 1.7 for discussion of possible action to adopt Resolution 2024-09, a resolution establishing a nine-month moratorium on renewable energy generation facilities. Why don't you both come on up here?
Pam Harrington for the record, Natural Resource Officer.
Shelby, not Planning Coordinator.
And if Brian's still on, thank you for providing that overview of what we've been working on for the last year. I've been working with you with Green Link. And now we'll shift gears for a little bit to talk about something even more local with our potential moratorium and ordinances, and then we can flip back, if that's okay, to talk about, because now we have a second ask for you, and that's regarding Green Link. That's just the way the presentation came together. So, yeah, so I'm just going to start out with a little, and I can really shorten this for you guys, because Brian took a lot of the work on telling you what's going on, but I, are they pulling this up on your? No, I wasn't. I figured they had it from the link.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's a hyperlink on.
For 1.7.
There we go.
For 1.7, yes. It starts with mine, and then I'll shorten mine up for 1.20.
Is it the proposed Western Solar One, or is it the Green Link final?
It's Resolution 2409, 1.7.
Right there, yeah.
There it is. That's the resolution.
Keep going, keep going. There we go.
That's the beginning. There you go. There you go. Thank you. So they, you build it, they'll come, renewables. I think that's a good segue into what we're looking at. And next slide, please. So this is my first year working for you guys, and it was electrified. I wanted to see a smile. I got a beautiful day. But, yeah, I had to deal, we are all dealing with these mega plans that have come out regarding renewables. And I just wanted to highlight them real quick, because I think Brian did a great job of telling you what's going on. But behind the scenes there, we had the Biden-Harris administration that wanted 100% carbon-free electricity by 2035. So that's like the big driver on all of this. We'll see, that might change. But we had a congressional mandate in 2020 that said, you will get 25 gigawatts of renewable energy produced on public lands by 2025 next year. And guess what? They reached it, so they can check that box. So that's not holding over our head now. But then, as Brian had also mentioned, we did have the Nevada Constitutional Mandate. And that said, and we've got Chloe here in the room, and she's great, she'll talk later from Nevada Energy, she's been working with us to grapple with all this. But this constitutional mandate said 50% of NV Energy's energy sources would be renewables by 2030. So that's what we're working with too. But guess what? We already have 500,000-plus acres of pending solar projects in the state. So I think we're well on the way there. And that's where we say, why do we have to throw open 11 million acres of Nevada public lands for this mandate? And so this is more setting the stage again, because then Shelby's going to tell you the more stuff that's more interesting to all of us, I think. But just to get a little background on all this, why we're pulling our hair out. So the renewable energy is a political topic, we all know that. And it's been fast-tracked from DC BLM. And there's a couple of things that they've put forth then to help move this along fast. And that's the Renewable Energy Rule, and then the Utility Scale PEIS, that's an Environmental Impact Statement. And then we'll talk about Green Link North after this a little bit more. So again, getting things ready. So, oh, good, you're on that slide. That Renewable Energy Rule, it went out in May, and it gave such great incentives, 80% off discount to get your stuff in line. So everyone's rushing to try and take advantage of those discounts and set up their shops. So that's part of the thrust of how things are moving along. Here we go. Then we have the Utility Scale RMPA that came out. That's the one that we, a bunch of us counties protested. And we did too. I did it for you guys in Lander, just saying this is overreach from DC. They took away our voice as counties, and a lot of the other states did the same thing, or counties in other states. It was 11 western states and 162 million acres that they did an EIS for. It's too big, too much. And the governor's office agreed with us, by the way. So, yeah, when he did his, what is it, the consistency review, yeah, he used our stuff in there, and a lot of the things. So like Brian said, I don't know where any of this is going to go with the new administration, but I'll move forward just so you know, that's just kind of what has happened in the background as we move forward. And this next slide, it's just, I think Brian had the same slide up too. It's the amount of lands that would be available, and you can see Nevada is 11 million. It's a lot of, a lot of acres. And the next slide is, he showed you this slide too. Sorry, they're not very readable, and they're really not very readable for a lot of reasons, maybe. But, yeah, it's, there's a small amount that's excluded for the lands. But this is all under play with all these different big rules. And when I went and saw Director Rabey, because we protested, I wanted to talk to him personally before we protested this, and he says, I know Pam, we all got to grapple with this if it goes forward, and what we'll do is we'll have workshops, and we'll all sit down and see how we can put all these pieces together. So I don't want to belabor you too much with this stuff, because Shelby's got better stuff to talk about. And then we'll get back to Green Link North, because I am going to ask you if you would sign a comment letter on that. But let's go ahead and.
Okay. Will you go to the, scroll down some, there's another slide. There we go. So I am here to ask for a temporary moratorium for renewable energy generation facilities. Next slide. So currently, in our code, we have nothing regarding renewable energy facilities. The current processes, they apply for a special use permit, it gets reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission. Once it goes to the Planning Commission, we have public hearing requirements, right? So we notify all the neighbors. We are able to add, you know, any kind of conditions we want in there, so that is a protection that we currently have. But we don't have anything in code that specifies, you know, particular documents that they have to supply or anything like that. Next. Oh, nope, you're on the right one. Sorry. So we have had some solar facilities come through in the last 12 months or so that have already been issued special use permits, and we'll go over a couple of those. The first one is Crescent Valley Solar Energy, down by Crescent Valley, 1,200 acres, 149 megawatt facility. This special use permit has already been approved. There was no time limitation on it, it was issued in 2019. I have been in contact with them, it sounds like they're going to move forward, but it's kind of been back and forth. I don't know if they filed with NV Energy to connect to their facility to be able to sell their power. That was not something that was looked at when their special use permit was filed, but it is a requirement that we're looking at to add into the new codes. The next one is the Watt Group. They're down south of Battle Mountain. They're looking at 640 acres, 150 megawatt plant with 100 megawatt storage facility. Once again, this permit was issued in 2020, but no time limitation was included on the permit. This one, I have been in contact with them, and it's also back and forth whether they're going to go forward or not. This one, they want to connect to the Valmi Substation. And again, I don't know if they've been in contact with NV Energy to sell that power to NV Energy. Next one, the Roostercombe Project, they have not submitted any applications yet. They're proposing a 400-megawatt facility on 3,840 acres. They're in the preliminary stages. We've had several development meetings with them, and they're planning on connecting to the Valmi Substation. So this is up Eisenhude, north by the 25 Ranch. And that one is located partially on private land, partially on public lands. The next one, SB Energy, again, up Eisenhude, 3,800 acres, 450-megawatt storage or facility with, 450-megawatt facility with a storage facility as well. They haven't submitted any applications, they're also in the planning stage, also connecting to Valmi. And then, since I've prepared this presentation probably a month ago, I've had one other company call requesting a meeting for another solar project. Not sure how large that one's going to be. That one again is up north. They want to meet next week, so we'll see where we land on this, whether we'll have that meeting or not. We also had a meeting with NV Energy last week, last week?
I think so.
And they presented to us that we had, there was 10 solar facilities that had submitted to them to connect to the Green Link. So kind of conflicting information there to connect to the Lander Substation near Let's see, what else do I have? Next slide. I've done a little bit of research in what other counties are doing. As Brian presented, a lot of interest down in Nye County, and they are really going hard on these solar projects and developing this really intense code on how to deal with them. Elko Mineral and Humboldt County, their codes are all pretty similar. They require special use permits, but not quite as detailed as what Nye County is proposing. And then Churchill County, they also require a special use permit with separation between wind, geothermal, and solar, so that's something we could look at as well. One thing I do want to let you guys know, we have a special use permit in process now for a solar development, but it's for private use for a farm down in Antelope Valley, which for me, I kind of consider that as a different sort of project than these large commercial developments that are going to be, you know, selling the power and not personally using them. So one thing I wanted to ask the commission is if we want to leave those private developments off of this moratorium so that that project can go through?
Well, absolutely. I think, because there's a lot of people that are looking at solar as a way to basically help the household, because energy is expensive. But these guys that are trying to capitalize off it and spot your beautiful county up with these big things, it's just, yeah, two different things.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. That's how I feel about it.
So pretty much, I, me and a lot of other staff feel that, you know, these projects are going to have a huge impact on our county, and we want to have something in our code that kind of gives us direction on how we want to deal with these and how many, you know, that sort of thing. So we're just asking for this nine-month moratorium to give us some time to develop a code, not to not allow them, but to give us some teeth and some guidelines on how.
Okay, so first off, is nine months, is it a long enough moratorium?
I think so, just because we already have, you know, other counties already have a lot of codes that we can go off of, so it's not like we're starting from scratch.
And then, yeah, personally, I'm totally in favor of it. So because it's like, I worry about it, because Nevada, I think it has, I think, the highest solar index in the nation, and they're going to come where there's available public lands, and that's right in the middle of our neighborhood, our back door. And it's like, it's, you know, we're spending all this money on beautification and, you know, the future, and it's like, is that what we want? Like, when you're going to California, you drive through Mojave, you look at all those windmills out there? I don't want that. I don't want that.
No.
That field to Lander County, right? That's not what we are. So, yeah, I think we need to take a hard look at that, because I think, like Pam said, you build it, they will come. And it's like, you got all these people that want, they're wanting to hook up, you know? So, I don't know. What do you guys think?
I know Naco has been working with Nye County. You could get ahold of Amanda there at Naco, and they could help you with what Nye County's doing.
They've already been in contact with Brent from Nye County.
Okay, because I know Nye County's taking a really, really strong stance. My concern is the environmental issues, you know, like anything where there's sage grouse, they take, there is no brush or anything underneath those because of fire danger. So here we are, we're fighting with the government over sage grouse, and then they're going to bring in these solar plants and take away all the sage grouse habitat that we've been developing. And if they fence them, that blocks migratory routes of the, of the wildlife, which is a huge issue in Wyoming right now. And it's just, it's so unsightly. And then there's no plans for what happens when they're gone. In Utah, over by Delta, they have this huge solar field that was abandoned, and they didn't have to clean it up. There was nothing there to force them to clean it up. There's all this broken glass and torn-up panels, and that's not what we want for our county.
I agree.
Clarification for something that's upcoming. Right now, on Planning Commission has got an application in for solar panels array for powering pivots. And the way this reads, I think it would prohibit them from having that approved. Do we want an exception and make it only for commercial, or how, or do you care?
I think that's what Shelby was alluding to.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but how do you want to, do you want to change this, or how do you want to deal with that? Because that's already there. This says it's going to go- Because that's already there. This says it's gonna go into effect immediately. You could just, instead of immediately, make it go into effect, when is that meeting? Is it next week?
Next Wednesday.
Make it go into effect at, at the end of the month.
Private.
Just exclude the private.
Yeah, just exclude private.
Or exclude private, yeah, we can do that.
I mean, it's like, yeah, exactly.
But we gotta change the wording, is my point.
Got you.
So.
But they can still approve it.
Go ahead. Yeah. I, I think the, the things that we were looking at, and I spoke with Pam about, is, uh,
Approving.
They, they, they have this 11 million acres. Lander County should probably start looking at designated areas that fit for, for solar if we're gonna allow them. So we have some, some areas that fit. If they wanna put them in a salt black and we aren't hurting, you know, our grazing permits and other things that, you know, public land access and so on and so forth, that might be something that the commission considers as well. Um, and then, before we ever see anything, that they have a BLM approval. So we aren't vetting, and, and NV Energy as well. So we aren't, we aren't vetting a bunch of other, you know, things that should already be vetted somewhere else, taking up our, our time because our, you know, we don't have the, the bandwidth and staffing to take care of that. And then, um, their power cells agreement in place. I think that that's important for us to see where this power is going and, and how that's working now. I don't know, maybe somebody from NV Energy can speak more to how that works as far as power, but it'd be pretty terrible for all of Nevada land to get covered up with solar panels to watch all that get shipped over state lines to California.
And that has happened with, uh, some of the geothermal.
Yep, so I, I think them are all things for this commission to con- consider. The last thing that everybody should consider is the disposal plan. Um, these solar fields, they say they have 20-year life expectancy. Well, where are they going with all these panels and who's gonna be burdened with them? I know that our landfill can't take them. Um, so how, how are we gonna, how are we gonna deal with this when, when it's all done? I know that the windmill projects that took place in the past, they're still out there falling over, and, you know, they look terrible. So, um, if we can, you know, cease from, learn a little bit from somewhere past the windmills, avoid some of these complications in the future with these solar things, I think it'd be important. And I didn't mean to point you out with NV Energy. No, go ahead.
Come on up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Chloe Chisholm. I'm the Government Relations Advisor for NV Energy. Um, I first off just wanna start by thanking County Manager Ramos and Pam and your team. Um, we have had the chance to meet a couple of times before today to discuss, uh, this potential moratorium that's being considered today. So I just appreciate your team being accessible. Um, we do look forward to working together on fashioning a, a solution that addresses the county's concerns surrounding renewable development. So, thank you very much. You have an awesome team working here at the county, and we are looking forward to having meetings with all of you as well. So, uh, yes, with a large influx of project applications coming into the county, we certainly respect your concerns surrounding renewable development. Um, and we want to be a resource, uh, to help you navigate these projects and applications. Um, we've been working very closely with Nye County over the past year and a half during their moratorium on helping them fashion a ordinance regarding renewable energy development in their county. We were, have worked very closely with Esmeralda County on a renewable energy ordinance as well. And we also meet very regularly with Humboldt County leadership and their lands use consultant. Uh, they are also in very early stages of revising their renewable energy permitting. And so all of this is to say that we are committed to working with each county individually. We know that each county is unique and has unique concerns when it comes to open land and preservation. So, we wanna make sure that those concerns are addressed. Um, so today I have brought, oh, we just also wanted to come here today in person and, and offer ourselves as a resource as you have these discussions surrounding renewable development and hope that we can answer any questions that you might have, uh, while those conversations are being had. So, today I did bring with me a copy of our development process flow chart. It's just a very simple visual representation of how NV Energy works with developers and how we evaluate potential projects to see if they are even viable. Um, I hope this can be helpful in the short term, but again, we are looking forward to having regular conversations about this and meeting with you all individually. So I'll leave this, um, here, and I've also left my business card. Please feel free to reach out to me at any time with any questions. Um, and I'm also open to answer as many questions as I can. I'm certainly not a, our renewables expert or our transmission capacity expert, but I can. I also, um, wanted to address a comment that I heard County Manager Ramos make. There is a bill draft request currently in the legislature that will address recycling of solar panels. It's just a BDR right now, but that is a topic of conversation that will be addressed at the legislature. Um, and I can also check in on that discrepancy between applica- between what we heard, uh, as far as requests to tie into Green Link at our meeting last week. And I, I don't know if it's applications in Lander County. I know that that is public information. The only thing that's not public is the company or the, who the specific requested is. We also do have capacity that's specifically reserved for NV Energy to serve our native load on both Green Link North and Green Link West. Uh, so I will check in with, uh, transmission planning and, and get that detail ironed out, and we can, we can discuss that. Uh, but again, please feel free to reach out to me if you, and we're looking forward to meeting with all of you, and, and thank you for your time this afternoon.
Real quick, do you guys, does this power stay in Nevada?
What power specifically?
The, the solar power that's gonna be tied into the Green Link. Would it be staying in Nevada, or is it being shipped elsewhere?
NV Energy specific. We serve our customers first. I can't speak specifically for outside developers who come in. That's, that's not up to us. So I'm, and I can also double-check that answer, but I'm, I, I, NV Energy, we serve our customers first, but, oh, yeah. And I will double-check that answer as well, but, of course, yeah.
Okay, so, you guys have any more questions? Does the public have any questions on the, on the issue? So, um, we're dealing with, so.
I'm trying to, if, if you're gonna do this, um, I'm trying to figure out how to word it to allow the private. Real quick.
Wouldn't we just exclude private?
Yeah, I guess you could.
Would you say strictly commercial? Moratorium, commercial?
On public land, I mean, I think that's what we're, we're up against.
Public land is the issue, right?
It's the private land, I mean, if they wanted.
Uh, I would.
How would that?
No, just maybe against commercial, because.
Uh, facilities, selling their power.
Selling their power, power generation, that's right, selling, I like that. Yeah, because you're, you're gonna have commercial outfits that are trying to generate power to lower their power bill, right?
Yes, like Orman uses, uh, solar power for parasitic.
Okay, so just put the word selling after the word for in line one. Um, what page is this? It's not page numbered. I think it's page four or three.
Can we give just direction to? Want to word it to, uh?
And modify that.
What direction for the?
Another idea too is could we just make it the size of something, because these people that are selling the power, I mean.
We could limit it to that. So the one that we have, um, now is a little bit under acre. Uh, so maybe if we limit it to the five acres or more.
Something like that, yeah, because, I mean, we're talking 3,000 acres and very large units, right? So, so just an idea, but yeah, that's, we could just give direction for her to get, or you guys to work together to come up with it, and then we could, uh.
Well, the problem is.
Modify this resolution. So the resolution number, and I think that's why. Yeah. Okay, yeah, so what is the, the page and line, Bill?
I'm trying to figure out what page I'm on here. I guess, is it three or four?
What line are you on, Bill?
It was line, I think it was line one. Just right at the.
Temporary moratorium, line.
Right, um, that we're.
It's right at the now, therefore, find, now, therefore be it resolved, and then the next page.
Processing any.
Processing of any future applications for permits for selling renewable energy generation facilities.
Or over five acres.
Or for sale of renewable energy. No, that won't work. Permits for renewable energy generation facilities that sell. Something like that, that sell, oh, uh, electricity. Let me think.
Or for renewable energy generation facilities larger than five acres.
That would work too, yeah.
Or do we wanna put it at five, or do we wanna make it smaller than that? Maybe, I don't know.
Two acres.
So you wanna say energy generation facilities larger than two acres?
Yeah, selling, yeah.
All right, well, we just put that.
Yeah, or something like that.
In, again, in the now, therefore, uh, clause.
Page four. Page four, lines one and two. Yeah.
Okay, so, so, so we're agreeing on the change that's gonna take place on the resolution?
What is it, greater than two acres?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I would put that.
One and two.
Yeah, for energy facilities greater than two acres and other similar activities. Okay.
That sound okay?
Yeah.
So do we have public?
The motion would be for the resolution, um, as modified by what I just said.
Okay, which we have on the record. Okay, so is there any public comment before we call for vote?
What, a motion?
Oh, sorry. Hi.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, I believe, uh, my colleague is on the line and is trying to unmute to make a few public comments. Is there some technical support we could receive?
I have sent her a request to unmute. She has to unmute herself.
Okay, understood. Um, I can go ahead and do this. Uh, so my name is, um, Maddie Sim. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Cypress Creek Renewables. We're a nationwide developer, owner, and operator of transmission-scale solar and battery storage projects. Um, we really appreciate the opportunity to provide our input in this process. Uh, we have a growing presence in Nevada and really appreciate staff's work to consider, um, you know, how to continue responsible development of these resources in a way that benefits, uh, Lander County and its communities. Um, I, I understand that there's still a lot of discussion happening, and there will be details that will be worked out with respect to what's in the regulations. Um, I would ask that county staff, um, seek input from renewable energy developers, um, as these regulations are developed. Um, and we will be submitting written comments and would certainly welcome the opportunity to work with you through this process.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay.
Ask that Madeline if that's what Lauren wanted, or.
If there's no public comment, I'm gonna call for a vote. I mean, sorry, call for a motion?
Thank you.
Been a long day. So do we have a motion?
I motion that we accept the temporary moratorium with the changes in, on page four, lines one and two, for renewable energy generation facilities under two acres. Is that how we want it?
Over two.
Or over two acres.
Okay, for a period of?
For a period of nine months.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's been motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well now we'll move into 1.8, which is already open.
Thank you, Pam Harrington, for the record again.
Yeah, this is, uh, specific for action regarding the Green Link North. It's right now out for public comment, as was mentioned earlier, until December 11th. For us to put in our final comments for, uh, Lander County, and in your packet is the actual letter. And we can, I could go through some real high-level bullets on it, or we can dive into the letter. Whatever works the best for you guys. I'll tell you the, the spoiler is asking for the no-action alternative from BLM for several of the reasons you just, you can, I can bullet through, or we can go through a little bit in that letter that gets into more detail. Uh, whatever your pleasure is.
You just give, you give us a good understanding of what we're dealing with in the shortest amount of time.
Yep, you got it. Sounds good. Uh, so yeah, there's, there's a few things that I wrote into our, our letter that's, there's a flawed assumption that says if the Green Link North wasn't to be built, then these other solar farms are gonna find other transmission lines to use. So we don't have to really consider them. And I think that's pretty flawed because we don't have a plethora of transmission lines through central Nevada. So I think you need to, um, also consider the solar farms that will spawn from having some, this, I can't talk anymore, the Lander Substation. And we've gone back and forth through the cooperating agency, Time, saying, no, there isn't gonna be any more electrons to go through to allow for solar. And then when we talked to NV Energy last year, last week, they said, well, there's 10 of them. Well, in the document itself, the EIS, it says in the reasonable, the reasonably foreseeable future actions section, that there's at least six, I think, that's tied to that substation around Lander. So, to cut to the chase on that one is, we feel they need to be analyzed as part of this. Build it, they'll come. So to just look at this and with tunnel vision of a right-of-way for the transmission line isn't the whole picture. If you build it, they'll come. So, anyway, that's the, that's the gist of that one. And then all the sage grouse impacts. There's lacs that are doing wonderful in Lander County down there with lots of birds. And this action would require changing the sage grouse RMP to reduce the buffers around those areas. I mean, that's a whole nother action that spawns from this. So anyway, by saying the no-action alternative, it opens it up for a little bit more look, a hard look at what is the, the, the route that would produce the least threat? I mean, and the I-80, you heard, really Brian didn't say that that one wasn't able to be done. Uh, they did say it's too expensive, but they didn't give us any detail on that other than a footnote at the bottom of a table. So we'd like to see that maybe looked into a bit because the Highway 50 route also has a lot of expenses that they didn't do apples and apples to compare it. So, yeah, so that's where we're at. So if, if the commissioners would feel good about sending in a no-action alternative letter, I don't know how much say we really have, like, this is really run by DC a lot, but that's my recommendation as your natural resource officer, that we look into it more.
I would like to point out that, emphasize that because, um, you have a new administration coming in. They're gonna be looking for support for the, the actions that they, that people want on the ground. So whatever you choose to do, my guess is that the Trump administration will listen to you.
Good point, Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, any, Commissioner have any more on it?
I know the substation that they're talking about tying into is, it was there in the eighties when I moved there. And so they're gonna have to do a lot of work to upgrade it to even begin to bring in those big power lines. It's like a new one is gonna be. Yeah, that's what they're gonna end up doing.
Now, they're gonna build next to it a really big one.
Yeah, and it's just, and those poles are such an eyesore.
Yeah, they are.
Coming through our community.
I mean, honestly, I keep saying this because it's catchy, but the build it, they'll come. I mean, they're talking about a whole corridor, so then they'll be the next ones, and potentially.
And I'm surprised the Forest Service is being so agreeable.
Oh, yeah, they had a, they had to find a little bit, and they were like.
They're gonna have to go through and take out a lot of, uh, area trees and brush and all of that to go down through there.
All in the name of what? That's, I, I'd like to know that question.
Yeah, you know, there's gonna be a lot of stripping done, clear over both the summits and over Pino Summit. Um, all of the different summits all the way across.
So more, I think, yeah, more, a hard look at this more because a lot of the new, uh, So more, I think, yeah, more a hard look at this more because a lot of the new, uh, electricity that they need for Reno is for, and we talked with NV Energy about this last week. It's not speculation, but for, um, data centers, that data centers need.
For USA Parkway, just in that whole area out there that they're developing.
Centers will be a lot. So I don't know why we have to front all of that through central.
But they're putting in solar fields out there left and right. Yeah, in that area too. If you go out through there in USA Parkway, there are solar fields everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yeah, it's crazy.
I do have a question for NV Energy. Do you guys have to, uh, are you guys putting in these big battery banks to store the influx, the charges that you get as well?
Yes, I have a storage.
Okay, okay, because I know that the the mines put in some big solar fields out here and they're, you know, happen to put them in just so they can kind of regulate some of that. So my my next question is what, what should fire departments and local emergency services be aware of? Because these electric cars are burning up in the cities left and right. I'm not sure if this is the same technology they're using in the batteries, is that?
That's something that we have discussed a lot with other counties, especially, uh, Naco. We have presented several times to the Naco Board. Commissioner Patrick has brought us concern quite a bit as far as it is an emergency at a battery storage facility and it draws services away as far as emergency fires, services away around the county. I'm not sure, this is just something that we discussed as far as what we can do to help the county, uh, prepare for this kind of thing and how, how we can help.
The cost of the chemicals for the batteries, because you have to use different types of chemicals to put out battery fires than you do range fires.
And that leads me to a couple more questions. So is, uh, the the basis you guys are using off of this, I've heard a a number of things. I'm, I'm just not sure what the facts are. Do they base the energy produced by these solar fields based off 100% light, 100, you know? Or do they work it off of, say, uh, 30% because you got cloud cover, you have rain, you have, you know, other weather? And then you have nights, obviously, that come in shorter days. Where are they basing their, the amount of energy that's going to be generated?
I'm not sure I understand.
So if a solar panel is supposed to produce five megawatts, is that five megawatts, um, only based off of the 30% light that it's going to get? Say, average day gets 30% light? Or is that five megawatts based off of 24 hours of light, 24 hours a day?
I don't know.
I can answer that to a certain degree. Okay, so say you have 150 megawatt solar field. Okay, that is the maximum that that solar field can produce. There's no guarantee it's going to produce 150 megawatts. You're going to be lucky to pull 80. And that's if you have consistent 365 days a year sun.
Right.
Right, you're never going to pull that 150 megawatts. The idea is that they're storing that in the batteries for them to operate off of it at night. But that is the maximum capacity that that field could produce at any time. But there's no guarantee it's going to.
So the reason I ask this is because if the county can generate revenue based off of this power that's that's produced and sold, then if you were only producing that much, you would only, the county would only be receiving that much revenue, correct?
Right.
Basically, say if if it's 150 megawatt solar field, but it only produces 80, we only, we would only get revenue based off of 80.
Right, and we don't get net proceeds off of solar. We get net proceeds off of geothermal because it comes out of the ground. Solar and wind are a totally different thing. They do not forgive you net proceeds.
Really?
Yes.
I apologize, I.
I learned that at Naco.
That's why Shelby and I are working on the ordinances through this moratorium because some other counties have went ahead and capitalized on getting some benefit for having these large solar farms.
This is also what Nye County has pursued is tax guarantees, uh, in their, in their renewable energy.
Right, but the percentage for renewables is a lot lower than net proceeds. It's, I can't remember what exactly what it is. But yeah, that's why we get so much money off the geothermal because it actually comes out of the ground and it's considered a form of mining and so we get the net proceeds.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you, guys. Okay, so, so basically, we're looking at approving, are you saying to approve the the DIS? And then, no, you're saying.
Well, yeah, well, we're not asking to not disapprove it, just to choose the no action. The, the, choose the no action alternative so that we could find a, a route with less harm.
Okay. So, um, if there's no more comments or questions on the issue, I'll hear, I'll listen, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion that we, um, authorize the chair to sign Pam's letter.
Of no action.
Of no action.
Okay, that suffice, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all right. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
So we'll move into public comment for, did we already cover everything on correspondence reports and future agenda items? I don't, I think we just opened it and made me aware. So anything more on correspondence reports or future agenda items?
What were the thank you cards for?
I didn't catch on the parade. Do you want to have a special meeting or do you want to?
We're just going to bring, or I think we decided to ratify.
We'll bring it back to ratify it, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
What were the thank you, it doesn't say who they went to, just say we're just nice thank you cards. Oh, okay. Yeah, but it doesn't, all it shows is just the front of it. It just, it just says, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, we can't thank you enough. I didn't know if that was going to us or if we were sending it out or. Okay.
Okay, if there's no more on it, we'll move into public comment for non-agendaized items. Is there a public comment? Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for sticking with us. Is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.